Yeah, there's other.
Those are two. Licorninsky. Oh, nice. Art history.
This one. We are going to be studying the day together, doing a few different things. The morning is going to be more strategy and and David has some information he's there and talked about. We'll get some discussions around that. And then in the afternoon, we talk about this general board development topic and looking back on successes of with us behind the times that we had. And then we'll get some results from the self assessment and identify. We in the direction of being high performing library board of persons. So I'm going to quickly go over some norms and what the little introductory activity and norms and objectives, just normal meeting stuff. And then we'll do a little activity to start warming up and getting to know each other a little better. And then I will. The objectives for today, this is basically paraphrased from the agenda. It's in front of me where they invited to marry. First, to celebrate the board successes, I think it's important to just, when you have a great nine or 10 months and get a lot done, it's useful to take your head out, you know, above water and say, hey, we've done some really greats. The the know one another better as people and as trustees. You're a new board. Some of you knew each other before, some of you didn't. So it makes sense that we need to do a little bit of just figure out who we all are and how we relate to one another. Next one, revisit the strategic roadmap and explore library trends. That's the content David's coming in and it'll inform some of the other things we're talking about. And then last one, to review the principles and practices of good governance. Assess the board's progress on its journey towards excellence in that Ovi. Does anyone? Does that make sense, everybody? Any other objectives that you have that you check it out here? Do uh, or does that basically cover the nature of the conversation?
A lot to do.
A lot to do. All right. These are from my I do. This is my standard thing. I from a book on facilitation that that I put out in the beginning of COVID, when all my facilitations were getting canceled, I was like, I just wrote a book about it. So I put down the meeting agreements that I like using. And I'll read them and you can tell me if there are others that you would like to add. And um, we'll do this because it's we'll do that because it's your meeting and if you have other ideas that have made me successful, let's use. So first one is respect the agenda and the timing of this. We have some breaks scheduled. Probably the schedule will shift a little bit if we were stationed longer. So just as we go, if we say, hey, everything at 15 minutes, right? Just come back. Without us having a. Turn off devices that made noise without notice. And be present, close the other tabs and on computers, we know what that means. But even in our minds, if we're thinking about other things like, oh, what are maybe your I whatever. Step away from those things for some of the time out here. Listen to understand the way we know you're not listening to understand is when someone else is still kind of talking, they might be wrapping up. And you jump in, you're like, well, if you think that's good, check this out. And you can you kind of talk over even what they're saying. The way we know to listen to hear and listen to understand is someone says something, there's a pause, you reflect if you have something to add, then you can, you can obviously. Speak to be understood, use I statements, not you statements. So I think I feel I do, not you think you feel you do. So we're all subject matter experts on our own experience, but we don't know as much about what's going on for other people. So be curious about what's going on for them. Maybe extend a little race if something happens where you're not really understanding where someone's coming from. Maybe that's an opportunity to extend some grace and just speak to, okay, here's what's going on for me in this situation. And let's try to figure it out. Avoid or explain jargon. Obviously, we come from different fields. We're all involved in the library. And we have different perspectives and different sets of jargon. So if someone says something you don't understand, or David throws out an acronym, you don't understand it, just ask. And the last one is wait, which stands for why am I talking? So if going on, maybe you're circling back. Sorry, made it might be a useful line to let some talk up. So that's what I'm. And I don't have a lot of space. We got a lot of paper. If there's something else to add, maybe, maybe have fun would be a good one. Maybe I always like to say it's your meeting. You have some idea and you're sitting there thinking, this isn't really open. Let's say so and we'll do something. So any questions? additions. Okay. Well, then with that, let's just take a moment. And what I'd like to do is just introduce starting what you have accomplished. I would invite each of you to just think about a success that the that the library that you all of it as a board have had since your inception. And you will just if we'll just do it as the spirit moves you. If you want to say something that you think, listen, well, we don't necessarily have to go around and and practice on or. If you want to take a minute or two, just quickly describe something that you have some appreciation, some gratitude for something the board has accomplished together. I would love to hear.
Yeah, so um, it's kind of a little, but not little thing. So um, I live in South Boulder, and I've heard several times from people in my neighborhood that they really appreciate that we opened up George Reynolds on Mondays. That happened because we were able to, you know, stay on the path that we planned. The transition is happening. It's it's here. So um, yeah. It's a little thing, but it's not a little.
I'm grateful that we got everything going. So on by January 1st, like we actually you know, populated a library district. And I think that happened because we were able to work independently, but together. And we didn't have to micromanage every decision. And I think we understood the urgency and I think also that we had a kind of a common whole common philosophy.
I think similarly, I think I I've really appreciated in the last nine months that everyone's like attitude about all of this has been really positive. That I think at the very, very beginning, we started meeting many, but we were having a lot of conversations. So just the sort of overwhelming nature of our task, but I don't feel like anybody was ever like discouraged or negative.
Just to get everyone's. Is that okay? Yeah, sorry. I'll do it. So there's a choice between a turkey sandwich, a BLT, or a mini bolognese, and we have gluten free bread as well.
Um, I will do a turkey.
And what is your?
Adorable.
No, it's by that backup. I'm sorry then.
Yeah, let me just switch. I think. Yes, thank you. I don't think so.
So I'm just gonna go around the table so I can get to her first one, if you don't mind. Yeah, it's a choice between a turkey sandwich, a BLT, or um, living label names. And what was your first? Good. Is there a good cream?
Is um, establish that a positive relationship with the city. Relationships with. Thank you. The city that they could see that there was a library district.
There we go.
Body.
Right? Oh, no.
People's the water pitcher.
Um, I would, I would say we hired, I believe at the time, almost 90, almost 90 amazing full time employees all at once. Including an amazing library director who came a little bit before that. But um, just being able to essentially start up an organization um, in a, in a matter of week, you know, weeks, months, uh, is a pretty incredible feat. And I feel pretty proud of that. What's the exact number? Was it almost 90?
Yeah.
Oh. Well, just um, is the no, it is still. But I'm done.
We have plenty of time in the frenetic. Because I I know everybody signed up to Dean like. And yet what we have to do is like, um, and I, and that's why I signed it too, right? But I uh, and I, and I think I've been waiting for this moment where I can't even say how many years for this, for this one. Um, and yet you have to go. And that seven frenetic months of building a, you know, $20 million business, essential government funding business was uh, nothing, I can't think that I nothing, nothing that I was looking forward to. There was nothing like that. There was nothing that I was thinking like, I can't wait to do this. But it was all stuff we had. And it we, and so for that, like the extraordinary grace that's born. Cause I'm okay with looking forward to that either. It wasn't like, I was thinking, you know, insurance and personnel policies. Absolutely. I mean, I, there was a month in front of you, but I certainly wasn't. That's not what I was thinking about when we were in election. It's not what I was thinking about. I was thinking like, let's do this library thing. Um, it was, it all was stuff that we had. Thanks, Eric. You were, you were speaking, she came in and I'll interview.
So. No, honestly, I just, I thought I really have appreciated in the last year, just everyone's attitude. That like, you know, David kind of like you said, you kept sort of warning us that this is going to be a bit of a slog. But I don't think anybody felt super intimidated about that or like everyone. I know, I don't, I don't ever recall every minute where people were like, this is too much. I don't know how we're gonna do it. And you know, it just was sort of like, let's just get it. We'll start again, refer.
Appreciate the way everybody almost volunteered, came up to speed, you know, got a level playing field of understanding very quickly. It's been, it's been a great team experience.
Hey, um, going once. What's the other said? Okay. Well, thanks. And welcome. And you're a library director. Hey, you're in the final statement. And so according to my vision, day I did between 16 and 20,000 steps, I'm not going to get anywhere close to that today. At least eat it. At least. You could sound good. Um, no, it doesn't really matter. Yeah. I I think we all have. I don't need it. I I actually, people normally know I hate PowerPoints. And at one point, um, not, 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 not told, the previous library, this one staff member, friend, I think, who was begging, so she would do. Cause I do use a lot of data and but it's not, the individual pieces of data are not that important. We included probably too much data in your back today, or we fucked out. But so this one staff member who knew I hated new data, uh, reviewing everybody in terms of like litters of puppies. Instead of I charted as litters of puppies and litters of kittens. And so she would break out the percentages based on what happened. Various, and in some cases, parts of cats and. But um, I I have a bunch of stuff to talk about. And if we, if we need to, I can write some stuff before, but um, I kind of wanted to walk us through, you know, we didn't really ever have an opportunity to do just a basic orientation. Uh, and I know that there's a lot of things that I, at least in my, what I'm in, I'm thinking like, oh, gosh, I hope they're gonna be that in the moment. And I know we've gone over it, but very loosely, and I know you've read it, I think you all, you know, some of your long term dedicated library patrons, big, big into governance of libraries, at least three of you have done, or done library governance before. So, uh, but I just want to kind of wanted to go over some of this stuff again, at the beginning of the like, the basic things that library libraries. So um, we talk about them all the time. Uh, it it is important. And it's also, I think, it's important to remember that it's probably inconceivable that we could do this today. Like a library would not happen today because of this grand scope of, of what we truly believe in. And so, you know, the basics stuff is free and open to all. We collect all types of information. And that's, that's a critical kind of one to understand because whenever somebody tells me like, yeah, I don't like you. No idea how many there are books and how we, how terrible the books really are that we have on the shelf. But we try to be that is part of the principle of public libraries is that we're doing this, uh, work at all time. And then um, you know, the language in the larger rule of rights, which you all adopted, and I so appreciate that. Isn't about like, yeah, we don't like, it's not like we don't like censorship. It's not that. It's we resist censorship and we're we we resist censorship and we're like, and I mean, for us, like, that's my job, right? So I drink it. It was in the got it in the, you know, the thing, we have to have that, that solid kind of thing. And that's so hard in, 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 in my job in the job of the staff individually, because usually when people come forward with criticisms, uh, they're legit, like, they're legit, like, they should, they, they should receive something that is like, it's horrifying. Uh, you know, it's whatever. There's somebody who goes to the printer to pick up their print job, or they're trying to find out about more research about their father's experience with cancer. And on the printer is a picture of someone, you know, fucking dog. And it's like, oh, my God, like they, they, and so they come and they criticize this for it. And, and yet, in that moment, uh, and the, the one with fucking dog would be, would actually be considered not of the norms. And so it would be impossible to do it in a library. That, that is a real experience that I have had in public libraries before. And like, and having to explain to that person that everyone in the public library has a right to public access to the information that they desire. Um, and that they want, it's hard, right? To tell them, to explain to that person. And yet, it's important that we have that principle that everyone has a right to whatever information they want. At at its broadest levels, um, you know, uh, the introduction of any marquis, uh, so marquis design, the introduction to marquis, so in 50s, the, the person who wrote the introduction said, we will not be free. We will not be free until every third grade classroom is reading this book. Until every, and so that, that is the, the power in some ways of language until we can actually be public about it. Uh, it, it carries a power. So that repeats over and over and over again in societies. And I think it, it's such a it's such a challenging one because you will be offended. I am offended. I think you will be offended by the things that are in the library. Uh, you have to acknowledge that and then still stand up for that person's right. Those two have produced that information and for someone else's right to have access. Um, the last one that we don't really talk about much, and it's certainly on your dress. Um, it's ensuring the privacy and the confidentiality of library. This is a big part of what we do. Uh, we don't share information, you know, it's, so they had a problematic in a sense, we did. We, we interpreted that to not extract information on patrons. We don't do, but there's, there are points where like libraries had that database that Jeff Bezos ultimately got with Amazon way before he did. Um, but libraries don't store it. In fact, we, we, we delete almost all information about library use uh, that we can within 30 days. There's, we don't keep any records of what you've done on computer. Those are wiped out regularly. Cameras in libraries, it's wiped out regularly. All of those things, because we have this principle established in the law that we are protecting the privacy and the confidentiality of how people lose libraries. And again, another movie, there's always these movies where somebody can go and you pay some guy a little bit of money and then they'll give you some information. Then you find out like what somebody's reading, right? Like you find that somebody's reading from the public library. I, if they've done so, and somebody is storing it, and that, if that is a violation of the law. So it's not something that can be freely, and we would not if you wanted to come in and check out books on how to build a bomb or disappear forever or whatever else, I mean, somebody came in and asked for that information, in all likelihood, we wouldn't have. Um, but it would be against the law for us to share it. So an important kind of perspective to keep in mind. And so then I want to talk a little bit about trends in libraries. You guys asked for this and um, the trends are, you know, you read about it in the paper all the time, right? Like so, and, and we have a in the paper today, right? Like so, um, this is that the impossible idea of bulk. Public libraries came about in a moment where people thought they could change everything. That, that was a, in the, in the, in that era, the progressive era of the United States, and not the same rest of now, but in that progressive era of the United States history. The belief was that they could change everything. It's when they began to regulate banks. So everything was happening. But at the time, uh, there were a lot of women's groups. Uh, and keep in mind, uh, women couldn't vote. And they're still 50 years away from being able to vote. But they established, uh, reading in public and free access to public libraries. It is essentially like, if you leave the story, and I don't know if it's true or not, it's the inspiration for Carnegie. Carnegie ultimately became a person credited with the value of the rise of public libraries, because he invested a lot of money. But his, the rationale for doing so, if you believe the historical story, is that he couldn't get into the public library because it was too low fee. So there were libraries, like Benjamin Franklin came up with, but there was a $2 membership. He couldn't afford the $2. And so later in his life, he decided, I'm making these things available everywhere and building billions of them in place. But the movement had already really begun among women's groups. Um, the disenfranchised essentially who had decided like, we're gonna make stuff freely available so we can share information amongst lots of different communities. And so the library, I mean, in a sense, has been under duress from that, since that moment, right? And you know, an argument like we see in the papers, like book banning, we all, everybody gets I mean, certainly folderized, we all get outraged by the fact that somebody's gonna, but the, the same is true for the editorial that you see in the paper where it's clearly the case that there are parts of our communities to this day who do not believe in the value of shared ownership, who do not believe in the value of people coming together and having access to a social resource that's available for free to everyone. Because we all pay um, we all pay for it. It's a, it's a pooling of resources to allow something. And it's a, it's a foreign concept. It's a foreign concept to capitalism. It's a foreign concept to the way we consume. Uh, and that, you know, when you push me into the corner said like, what's the deal in this world? I would, I, I, I have seen my entire life, I've seen this massive struggle between people who believe in being what I called citizens. And I don't mean by you got a green card or whatever, people who are in the, in the Renaissance idea, in the sense in which you are willing to participate. You're like all of you are. We are willing to participate for you are a person who is a consumer. And in this battle, uh, I guarantee you the citizens are losing and have been losing since about, you know, 1850. Um, the idea of consumption has more or less taken over our way to think about things, about new things. And a library is not a place of consumption. We are not basing this idea at all. It is, is something where the free and open law, everyone has access to all kinds of information they want. And so the criticism that we see today and we, and we review, um, you know, all these things, the homelessness, uh, the day, um, for the library, um, and I'm happy to take and talk about many of these kind of questions, like the library is addition, right? Um, that's not a choice. That's not something that shows we are free and open all. Everyone has access to the library. The, the fact that in our society, there is a crisis around housing, that there is a crisis around mental health. Uh, so you see those. Because if those were the crises that we were experiencing in our society, and we were experiencing self other form crisis, you would also see that. And so all these things that we keep coming back to, like now, it's like, 30 years ago, there was a different crisis. And if people would have complained, like, why don't I see whatever X? Um, but it's because everything that's happening in our society occurs also in the public library because we are that community gathering place, because we are a public sphere, and because we are essentially book space. The, the, does that make sense with regard to the, when Gary called me for his editorial, like he was like, oh, you know, like, you know, all these crises, they've been around for like decades. Like, I don't feel dumped upon. And we shouldn't feel, I don't feel, I never felt like the city was dumping something on us. It has, it's just simply this is a crisis in our community. And if you can't be, if you want to walk all around with blinders on, fine, you know, don't see it. But if you want to come to the public library, if you want to enter into public space, if you want to be a citizen, then you have to be into acknowledge that all of these things are crises within society. And then how you think about them is your own business. But the idea that simply that they are there is just like, that's just another part of being a part of our community. But you see all the hills and all the great. Censorship is the one, um, I think censorship and book, book, book banning, I, I think probably is the trend that is consuming, uh, most of the media time. I think the New York Times and Washington Post will, you know, considerately and now the camera also are, are trying in a way to take it stand because they are also, it's, it's a perk that the sites are on them, is right. Well, so it's, it's not just freedom of speech, uh, it is freedom of press. And so journalists and librarians in that sense, we're all in the same boat. So it's not a surprise that the New York Times has a story every week. Washington Post has one every two weeks. And now the Daily Camera is also writing about censorship and book banning. It's something that people get excited about. Uh, I can say with absolute, uh, certainty, it's not been an issue in Boulder. Um, we have a very forgiving, and you know, that's one of those places where we can be enormously grateful for the community we live in. Uh, we do get criticisms. And people say, I don't think this belongs to the collection. And then what we do is we call, we talk to them. We were talking and telling them about what their rights are, follow requests for reconsideration. But the context of that conversation is like, I realize you don't like this book for you. And we, but what you're asking me to do is to take this book so that none of your name. And almost a person, every folder, it's. And it does depend in some cases, um, with issues around book banning, uh, you know, it comes with a person. Then it goes somewhere else and that group gets involved. So this happened, I think, four or five years ago. The person was upset by a book that we had. Uh, they went to the city, um, the city, uh, deputy city manager wrote to me like, David, I'm sure you must be appalled that this book is an inflation. And I'm like, well, let me start talking to you about like what we do. Like we've collected all types of information. And then, uh, from that point, when the died of the city, they went to Hout, Boulder County, not Boulder County, King. We had and they are fortunately very good partners at the library in all kinds of different things. But yeah, they were, there, there was a book. It was offensive. It was terrible. It was, you know, pseudoscientific garbage. Um, that 25 people were on the waiting list for, um, all about, uh, Keen's gender transition. And it was, you know, not a, and how horrible it was. Um, and a hard book to defend, but nevertheless, a book that we did. Uh, and it was one of the more popular books there for a while, it's on the New York Times bestseller list. But you know, there is a concern, it, it goes from an individual who's offended by the book to a group or a political group, then to a social group. And then that's the pressure that comes on the public library. All of, all of the groups believe the book is objectionable. In that case, nobody ever formally challenged, which I found to be really interesting. Um, and, and something that I'm grateful to live in for is that they all understood that, yes, while they thought it was offensive. And they didn't, maybe they're not want to child it. And they disagreed with it vehemently. They did not want it to be removed from the public access, from the public sphere, which is.
It was before you go off of that, at the JLF session, you and a person were at.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things you guys talked about was controversies within ALA and controversies that I heard as kind of generational around, you think of censorship and people. So there's another view. Censorship that's coming up.
Yeah. So all the challenges really that we've, I mean, with the exception of a few bothers or verse, um, uh, you know, the, the challenge that we've gotten in, uh, Boulder in my time here have been from, uh, a more of an aggressive community. And so, um, you know, the, the one, the, the most recent challenge that actually made it to a formal review. That was a children's book, uh, Sylvia and Benita were both on the work done, uh, on the commission at the time. Uh, it was, um, challenged the, by the patron who said it was an imperial, imperialist's view of Thanksgiving. And indeed, uh, it was a terrible book. Like I, it was like a bunch of pictures of overweight white people sitting around eating tons of food. And then these idealized photographs of native peoples who were not even the want to know. I mean, like, I think there was one picture in there of like, somebody like who was clearly a plains. And I was like, it had nothing to do with anything related to the story. But it's like, um, yeah, then we defend, right? Like, and, and so, uh, and not. Yeah, then we defend, right, like, and and so, uh, and not, not because the book was okay. But it was one view of Thanksgiving, which is certainly representative of how many people see. And so, you know, it it it's always a little. Complicated. I mean, I I don't know if I would just necessarily agree that's an imperialist view of Thanksgiving, but it was, it's a view of Thanksgiving, which is. Close to the truth, uh, and certainly wanted to depict something, uh, that was not necessarily. Uh, a more holistic view of how we arrived at this holiday, I can attribute, um, but yeah. Then the one that I was referring to, that came up without voting, this. You know, we have other challenges about, like I said, Oxford, people were like, I mean, there's plenty of film out there. It's like. Those books in my mind, like, and what else I said at that session, it's like. The movement that we're seeing now in the country, notes being written about is a well-funded orchestrated campaign. It is a orchestrated campaign. I mean, they've traced the funding. It is two groups, um, they are heavily funded. They have funded most of Moms, uh, for Liberty all around the country. Those groups have been heavily funded. And it's complicated in communities right around us, uh, and in Colorado. In heavy, 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 on the front range as well, like. They come with lists of books, um, not of which they've read, the list of the same list that they shared in Alabama and in Louisiana. Um, and. The the. The manner in which they are doing it. Uh, the 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 thought that they have is that more parental control, so the parents. Have the right to say what's in the public sphere in order to protect their own individual children. And they they use whatever sexual content predominantly as a form of what the criticism is. So it is things around gender expression. It is things around L G B T Q. These are the issues that are, that's not something that is gonna be easily challenged within our Boulder community, but there's possibilities that it's gonna come forward. Um, and that that challenge is one, um. That I hate to be really crass, but, uh, you know, it has been, it is. It is obvious from where I sit, form of political manipulation, right? So the governor of Virginia. Who was elected in twenty sixteen campaigned based on this idea of parental control in schools and. Uh, and it had a lot of leverage, um, with suburban. Women voters, it it was able in a state that had previously always had democratic governors, or Republican governors elected based on that template. Uh, of pushing that issue around the horrible stuff that is in the books and the children are reading about. God, you know, not woke ideology and, you know, gay sex and all these other horrible things that then that. Had been mirrored then by Santas in Florida and that's what.
So let me rephrase that a little bit, because because the piece that I was thinking about is something that I think may be coming to be seen. Um, and it was, as I heard it, more about. Younger generations of librarians and book buyers wanting to censor authors. Not because of the content of the book, but because, um, Stans's office that he recorded it. And as I heard, it actually made a point, hey, hey. And so I was thinking about that, and I think back to why they're making something.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I guess so. But like, you know, this began, this began as a backlash to what was happening in university camps, that's something like. Uh, what what began on university campuses, you know, before Trump, uh, was safe. Crazy, and so there there, I mean, it's it's difficult for us to get up and defend the right of a, it is so. To get up and defend the right of a. Of a person who is a bigot or hateful, whatever, to to speak. And this was primarily in university campuses, and university campus began. Uh, this process of wanting to censor what people said, and in other cases. Uh, to censor materials based on what somebody had done in their personal life, whether they had a relationship or they had said, like, I think this is terror. And so they were trying then to censor the materials that were up previous to material, based on that, and that. I mean, I was in a weird position then, too. I wasn't, we, it was not Boulder, but like, yeah, I was getting up and defending, um. You know, the right of like, you know, again, like offensive people. To say what they wanted to say, and that there was, you know, this idea of safe words. Or the context wherein you do, you can leave a conversation because. Some form of language was expressed in that meeting, like that ends the meeting. We all get up and knock out. There's no context for a conversation. Uh, it had less than influence, I think, in publishing industry. Uh, the media certainly wasn't talking about it very much, but it was happening across campuses all across us. Uh, where young people were saying like, yeah, I'm not, we're not going there, and and we see it a little bit now, I think with, um. You know, on on campuses still, but it's not as prevalent as what we're seeing, uh, in the wholesale submission of books and list of books. Uh, we saw it early on, maybe a number of years ago in Boulder. Um, around, um, songs at Storytime. So, uh, a a good group, um, a a group that's, you know, in favor, uh. It's predominantly, it's been criticized as well, but it's a, uh, you know, pred predominantly a group. Of white women who have established, uh, a a policy of like, they wanna stand up for against racism. And so they began, it's a national, they started again sending out stuff, so I've experienced it as well. Like here are all the songs that are being used in your stories, and whether they're being used or not, and these songs, racist overdone, it doesn't matter if it changes words, they tune itself with one that triggers. Uh, a sense of of, uh, hate, and you need to stop doing those songs, um, in Storytime. So that 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 push and pull has been, is always going to. I mean, the reality is, is that people recognize the language in a public study has. Uh, but it's always the the desire to manipulate it or try to cease that speech, in my opinion. Which gives it power. That's the battle that's been going on for raging, you know, it's two hundred years, it's like, it's not. It's not speech itself. It is the means by which we want to regulate that speech or. Or censor that speech, which ultimately gives us that. That's the whole Marquis decide, which if you read Marquis decide. You definitely don't want that being read in third grade classroom, but, uh, but. The idea is that we are not free until that speech, uh, no longer has power, right? That's that's when we mean free, is when that speech no longer has, and that's the only way we recognize freedom, then, that's meaning then. But that 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 will tense or regulate speech is what essentially gives it power, like, um. And pauses the opinion when you get, and all forms of groups want to manipulate that. And that's what Congress and for is being.
That's always yes, the thing.
But the part, I guess, where it's different now, uh, on this. But I've seen, I've been around the library long enough to have been there when the last one happened, like, so. The last one happened, uh, in the late eighties. It was a very similar in nature, less well-funded, but heavy, uh. Very heavy-handed push, and again, around L G B T Q issues. Uh, issues of race, uh, that was always, that that's, that was the tenor at the times then, um, and yeah. He's living in the Florida and the Southern Baptist Leadership Conference decided to boycott this. And that then led to, because of, uh, allowances made for, um, benefits for same-sex. And that in turn spun into this massive effort to censor, and that spun into all kinds of other things. But, um, the 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 attempt was the same. What is different now, and I I want you to be aware of this because it is dangerous, right? Uh, the the difference now is the. The willingness, and they can be this this talk around. The librarian agenda, and so there is, and librarians are by and large a progressive group, um, who who all, we all believe this, right? Like, we all buy into this notion that all forms of language have. Uh, uh, I think you'll write on all puddings, and so, um. There is supposedly a library agenda, and the groups that are coming for them are not simply saying, take the book out of circulation. But they are saying it is a criminal act. And librarians are being pandering and or, uh, child solicitation by making available books that. You know, to be clear, we don't stand by any of the content that's in the public library. We stand by the process that I've just described. Everything was. Um. But, um. That notion has led to, um. Criminal charges against libraries in Florida and Louisiana, it has led to people getting boxed. Lives been ruined on social media and and labor, losing their house, losing their job, and what's correctly, yeah. And it's all based around the idea that they can bring criminal charges against. Either library directors or library staff or key librarians within these teams because these books are on the shelf. Um, you know, some of the links that we've gone to, and I'm sure you guys have thought of the story as well as I had. Yeah, there have been weird things, like there was a library in Texas where the board. The board had asked for books to be censored. The librarians, uh, didn't like the idea. And so the board went in at close and just removed the books from the shelf without any public feedback. They pulled the books off the shelves and. Yeah, they did. The other board in California banned a book, uh, which was a sore spot, really without a lot of public feedback. Um, then the author and the publisher and then citizens bought, I think, maybe two thousand copies of the book. And left them on the doorstep, uh, the doorstep of the library for anyone to come by and pick one up. Um, so it is a complicated kind of, uh. Thing, place where we're in, in this conversation around censorship. I don't believe, um. Uh, I don't, I don't know, right? It's hard for me to say, like, I I my colleagues, I'm in contact with my colleagues in Colorado all the time. Uh, some of them are being inundated, um. With emails, with, uh, suggestions from people about even. Uh, books that are Christian, um, the the these, the these books in your collection don't seem very Christian, right? And maybe seem like anti-Christian, and do you really believe that those have a place on your shelves? Uh, so it it's extended in Colorado in its own kind of unique way. Um, the the, uh. The onslaught against books on race. Any kind of history. Related to a full reckoning of, uh. What was it? The sixteen sixty-three project that came out and, you know, it began, you know, the acknowledgement of slavery as a critical component of. Our history and our economic history, uh, there is a strong push to silence that conversation. To the extent that they take it, you know, even incidental mentions of anything happening to do with slavery is a book that may wanna get, that somebody may wanna get. Uh, I don't know so much that that will happen here. We also be teaching you one, I think, would be a dogfight, like it would be a hell of a fight in Boulder. Um, because it is a a, uh, a strong presence in our community and a strong political presence in our community, so that wouldn't be. If somebody did come forward with that, I'm sure we would find a lot of allies, um. But realize too that our allies may want us to remove something else, right? And. From where we sit, from where I sit, and I'm hoping you all reach the point where you feel confident and comfortable in that same. Environment is like, even when our allies tend to say, like. You guys haven't this book, you could, you're able to say, like, you know what, we have. We have a lot worse stuff here, and let me go, let me tell you.
We're not gonna say that.
I understand that many books weeks for years, right, and so. A lot of programs, I remember memories with Raff and Sacks. On the April, caution tape, and stuff like that. Uh, I I find it interesting because, you know, a lot of people also wanna. Uh, and 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 I don't know where I, we don't, we don't start at the end of. Um, every, we celebrate the knowledge, um. Uh. We celebrate freedom, right? You are free to read whatever you. So, um, and that has kind of taken a little bit of hold within. Other communities as well, because there there are libraries who wanna talk about. The freedom to read rather than, um. Ban books. I don't know. I don't know if that helps us. I mean, I mean, that's kind of what we've done, but, um. Uh, so we take that position, but in any case, um. That's the trends that they're talking, we talked about in the media. I also watched this get through, but I need you guys to be interested in this, uh, you know, and I'm very interested in it, but, um. What do we, right, so where from where we sit, what are the real issues? Um, you know, pandemic was a kick in the teeth, not only in terms of technology, but in terms of some things, and those are real. There is a sense of isolation and a sense of loneliness that we've all read about also in the papers. That's really real, right? I I I walk in the library, I go out and see the people there. I've seen some groups came back immediately, families with small kids. Like, we were closed, they were waiting outside the doors, and we opened, they all came back, right? Like, they didn't, they needed a place, they wanted. Young people started to trickle back in, uh, soon after. And it's interesting because they've always been a large constituent of the public libraries, but rarely needs, right? So they come to a library, I think, for a shared experience, uh, people watch, whatever it is, they are there in libraries, and it's been in every library from young people. That group between sixteen and twenty-eight, um, are a significant portion of our customer base. They mostly came back, and the way they act now is a little bit different than they did before. After the pandemic, like, I see them, but they're not like, you, you, it's like, but they'll be spreading all the tables, go on second to forty day. You see a lot of young people there on their computer. They're not interacting with anyone, and yet they've come to the library to do it. Why? I don't know, but they're back. So that that is one of those things, the the group that I think, um. I listed social groups, that the group that we have not seen back, of course. Obviously, older adults, uh, older adults in Boulder represent. More than twenty percent of the population, um, after the college grew, they're the second largest in rapid. Larger than children, families with children, uh, and they haven't come back in the numbers that they had before, and I'm not sure exactly what I know what that's about. Obviously, we're looking into that. We're rebuilding the main library, uh, with the idea to take you back to where we were, um. But I don't know if that's gonna be enough, bring them back, go over the bathrooms, go over the cafe, we're programming back, all those things that are gonna happen this year. Um, I I still have yet to see if they feel comfortable, right? So I I don't know what happened in their lives tonight, but I do notice that there are fewer, you have, but there are fewer older adults in almost any social. Or public sphere, and what there were prior to the pandemic, it's to me. In public library, very noticeable, in in other public spaces, I see it throughout, too, a little bit of that. Well, even the theater, you know, movies, there's just fewer, uh, people who are over certain age, and I don't know.
David, what is that age? What?
I mean, you know, it's like my age in the bottom, right? Like, it's, I I see fewer of me, fewer of the gray hairs, there is like that. Public places, like it used to be in Boulder, you go to the movies and it's like twenty, thirty percent gray. Uh, now you go, it's maybe five, I mean, so, and public libraries, same, I. In the public library, it used to be probably a quarter of our population. In programs in the Canadian Theater, it's probably seventy-five percent. Uh, we're not doing programs in the Canadian Theater right now, but, um. But it's interesting just in general, like, I don't see, and and so there's something there, uh, something hopefully we can figure out and bring it back, this is important demographic. Uh, you know, um. The erosion of public space, uh, we've kind of talked about this before. I mean, this is my biggest thing, right? The library is a crossroads of every community you've been in, anywhere you go, um. Outside of the New York subway, there's some kind of cross-section of the community, uh, in anywhere in the United States, and it's anywhere in the United States. You go into the public library, you will see their community in whole, and that is something that. Got me hooked on public libraries. It sticks to this day. I'm extraordinarily proud of it. Um, you see all the ugliness and all the beauty and everything. The libraries are. Because it is a unique institution. There is no other public place like it. And increasingly, public places are under duress, and they are under duress, partly because of crises, market things that government doesn't wanna fund, and it all. It all gravitates to small places where that public infrastructure still does exist, where everyone's welcome, we treat everyone with respect, it's freedom. It's free to say, all those kind of things. That is, you know, public restrooms, hate to bring up restrooms because. It's a joke that we spend weeks, I'm talking about it, but. Like, we are maybe the last public restroom in Boulder, and like there are not, and Supersis closed theirs, um.
Well, especially for a certain demographic of the population, like.
Yeah.
I can go anywhere.
Well, you can buy, yeah, you can buy a cup of coffee.
Yeah, but but for some demographics, no.
So that's just one other thing about, of an erosion of public space. Nobody wants to. Governor doesn't. Uh, but it's touchy, right? Like, so as soon as it's like, nobody else wants to do it. Then there's a, there's a, there's a, there's an issue for libraries, because we're still operating this idea that it's nineteen twenty-one or else like that, but. You know, we we experience it in relation to a lot of things, right? So, um, will they stop distributing tax forms? The federal government stopped distributing, sending you tax forms, maybe, how do you, there are some of you are old enough to remember what they sent. They stopped doing it, yes or no? Public libraries, public libraries distributing taxes. It was costly, it was energy, and then, and I'm sitting here thinking like, why are we doing this, like? We don't want people to associate us just with taxes, like, they're coming here, it feels like, and the federal government didn't wanna do it either. And then healthcare, right? So the healthcare thing happened, Obamacare happened too, and then we were the ones who had to show people how to get on those things. It's like, we wind up carrying the load for stuff that government doesn't. Like, we wind up carrying the load for stuff that government doesn't. And then, you know, within, initially with the Reagan administration, funding. Housing as well as declined, where did you find people who had, who were suffering from black housing and. Uh, had challenges with regard to mental health, I can guarantee you that mental health providers will tell them, go to the public library. You can find safe experience, you can interact with other people loosely, and you will not be threatened to say, right? And so then we became the gravitation point for that. It's the same for people who are, have been informally incarcerated and get out, that's what they tell. Go to the public library, you can have safe interaction, it's a cool place, you can talk to other people, you can run into people, see if you can reorient yourself. So it's like, being a public space comes with risk, right? Like we are, we are frequently pointed to and being the place where you can go.
Yeah, like give what you want, yeah. Eighteen minutes.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so the other big one that I wanna talk about today, and we'll, we'll go over with the. Tips from physical potential. Yeah, Eric cut me from. Those basically are the trends. Um. I wanna run through quickly. You know, most of you know it, and you have the powerpoint, pie charts are a way of depicting this, because it's not a pie chart, it's a, it's a. It's a, it's a group of blobs that kind of mix and intermingled with other stuff, but imagine that it's that kind of group of moving logs. Um.
Especially where Twitter is costing dollars.
Um, so we transactional thing, circulation, right? Um, that is roughly still sixty percent of our business, right? Human books in and out. Uh, it's a major expanded endeavor, it takes up shelf space, it takes up money to buy one point six million dollars of much different stack. It takes staff to lift the books back from the shelf, moving these things around. Um, programs and events, literacy and outreach each represent about, you know, roughly ten, although literacy and outreach has shrunk at various times to three. Um, programs may grow with a big event to twelve or thirteen, those are components that we do now. What's different about them, and administration is another. So what's different about them is that circulation is essentially a transaction. It's a little bit like the postal, right? Like we're, we give the postal stamp, but we take no responsibility for. Whether you read it or not. We're, we're not interested. Like if, if the numbers, if our numbers are going up. Then likely we can go back to our unders and say, give us more money, because all of our numbers are going up. The community in Boulder. I can proud to tell you, like, reads at a higher level than most, any other community in Colorado. Um, but not the most. Uh, our, our cabinet of the number of books we got from the public libraries is solid. But there are other communities that are better funded, naturally, Dan Harbor being one, where the number's four times. Like, so they, they're doing four times the amount of business in some kind of community, they have a, a super large budget. Decades, so it's a very different kind of economics. But the difference really between circulation and then literacy and that reaching programs and events, program and events, we go into a venue and. Uh, it's a performance, right? So it is, it is more, it's less passive. Uh, but it is still in some ways directional. We're providing a program that the, the. Participants come to consume, but don't necessarily get up and participate in. That's very different, which we, we classify for uh building sixty-one as part of programs and events. Uh, and so that's a. Totally different kind of interview, right? It is labor intensive, uh we have a very small crew that's in there. Has a huge impact, but it is a time consuming and ongoing problem. It's not like coming in, checking out a book, going home. Setting it on your bookshelf, maybe you read it, maybe you didn't, then you bring it back three weeks later or weeks later. Uh, literacy and outreach is fully, this is Boulder Reads and a number of those things, it is fully a participative, highly intensive, labor intensive. Long-term kind of program. So the investment that we put in there is significant, the impact is great, and it is highly. Um, what we see or what we have seen over the past four or five years is growth, significant growth in those programs that are. Participative and collaborative. The numbers that we see around circulation um are mostly. Well, it's pretty obvious, we know what button, right? We can buy more books that are going than will increase the number of circulation. With uh, we should literacy, what's complicated is, it is a heavily labor intensive program. The impacts are huge, right? So reading buddies. Uh, available like seventy-two kids a year. Uh, all of those kids increase their reading levels by one or two grades. How scalable is it? You know, we've talked about, can we get to two hundred families? Can we get to two thousand? The, the, the ability for us to do that, it's significantly more resources than simply. Six hundred thousand dollars more to buy off books, which won't show our numbers go up. So how do we scale those things that still don't listen with considering? Obviously, those programs, building sixty-one, Boulder Reads, Reading Bunnies, it's heavily volunteer.
What does that mean? Resources?
I'm sorry?
What does resources mean? Does it mean money or does it mean? Uh, sixty percent of library resources are transactional.
Oh, we, uh, that, I didn't write this, but it's uh, the money that goes into, uh, money. So the transactional nature, circulation, it's like. That is a lot of, uh, it is a lot of what we do, right? So the staff on the floor, um, uh, all the shovers. The collection and resource team, that's a large team, like the, the collection and resource team is. You know, five times the size of building sixty-one, uh, so, and they're just the ones who are buying.
This pie chart represents.
Yeah, dog, right. And it, it, so, um. And then I wanted to walk you through some data on, and so that's the nature of the beast. Um, I wanted to walk you through some data uh on the. What we saw with the pandemic and kind of chart, bringing where we're going with it. I, I'm sure you've all looked at this data, it's not surprising. Uh, we were um, at one point, I included. So it not in these charts, so I mean, I track data all the time, I track about thirty different points, these before, that are pretty big. I mean, one of the others is big is new cardholders, uh, which is kind of a weird canary in the coal mine, I think probably more than. Anything, it's indicative of a lot of the success, or it tells us what's happened, like. And as long as that number holds, we're pretty solid. And I don't think I included that here, but it's a data point that I've found to be an important one to track. Um, in Boulder, the number is absurdly high, having to do primarily, I think, with the transience of college students, right? So we, we see an influx of college students every, for every year, um, new college students. And so our numbers are. When I first got here, I thought like, these numbers are crazy high, but so they, they, they remained that high, so we, we wind up with around. Somewhere between eight and thirteen thousand new borrowers every year, and in a community where the turnover of the population is not that scary. Uh, that's, that's a huge, uh, it got, so it's been relatively steady, it stayed steady. Uh, through the pandemic, uh, which is good. Um, our cardholder numbers obviously are growing. Um, the visits to the library was the most alarming one, along with permanent, with permanent, this is not surprising, we stopped doing programming. Uh, we stopped basically doing a lot of programming during the pandemic, and our numbers dropped out of the bottom. Circulation, as you can see, um, has more or less recovered, but then if you flip to the next slide, you'll see why. Um, and that is like the twenty sixteen, um.
So have you measured number of visits? Is it like sixty to the door? Okay.
Um.
Some people could come in multiple times. Or like five people could come in at one time.
Hmm, yeah.
Um, and who do you think these ended up in twenty-three?
Oh, we're all, yeah.
I mean, they've kind of continued this trend.
So, comment, and then of course, from the comment was on permission, the board would get totally updated. Which I assume, so you guys, the kinds of data we see, I think. One thing I always found helpful, it was different. Because the branches have very different experiences, and so my question, number of visits is that having, having, having an influence by many.
Which is interesting, like, actually, no, twenty twenty-two. It's not, it's not, right? But in twenty-three, we saw some movement towards recovery. Uh, the branches, maybe they grow faster and come back faster, and that's a, that's a, that helps us maybe something about. And also the disposition of the public who feels comfortable in a suburban environment where they drive, we can see. I mean, that's a, that is a real thing, I feel, we don't know for certain, but to see the branch numbers increase, um. At a more rapid rate than the main lines at this time, because the one that was the most alarming to me was like twenty twenty-two.
You didn't have that. We did the hot three months.
Um, yeah, there were, and we moved all the years, there were, there were all these things that are going back, so I think that, that. We have to see if bringing them back will bring the numbers back, but it's a, it's, it's certainly worth. Watch, and, and if we get to the next slide or so, we'll, we'll get to how we build these back to itself.
But to just to show one anecdote, a part of the movement, but it's the change of the gray hairs we used to see at Menlo. And he said, you know, I've never been to the ranch, you know, been to the ranch, and I think that, and I think there's some. You gotta think about strategic time, you know, those things, trends.
Could be, it could be obvious to us that our, our stocks and branches, they've always been understaffed, even years ago. We've kind of begun to work with, with the, with this new district, we've added additional staff, but I mean, I look at it and compare it to other libraries before. We're operating business with all the output measures and, and key indicators with, in some cases. And that's, that, that's, that's, that's kind of almost across the board, but in the branches specifically, like we, we run the branches. Up until this year, uh, with six and a half or seven F T E. There are sixty-two hours a week, uh, in the case of Meadows, who was on a rapid trajectory up. Prior to the pandemic, they were, they were closing in on two hundred thousand visitors a year. Um, Reynolds was around one forty, uh, and you know, Nobo stated fifty, but it's. At, at that rate, and we're finding the Lord's Boulder Library, it was easily imaginable to me that we would get one of these this year. And in North Boulder, I don't know how detailed the walking you get, but the North Boulder Library uh is no different besides really. It's situated in the service area similar to George Reynolds, it's about twelve to sixteen thousand people. And so to hit two hundred thousand visitors there, it means probably it's cannibalizing from other locations, like people from, people who had previously gone to Maine. Are gonna find themselves in that one. And so that'll be an interesting trend to see. I, I don't know. It's gonna be cool, it's gonna be new, it's gonna be, and so then it's gonna, that'll be an interesting trend to see if, if it actually materializes. I don't know that it was a lot of better parking, you know, um, but then if it's two hundred thousand, it'll be. Yeah. Yeah, so the service area for the Meadows community, we look at, it's, it's the second largest, so it is around twenty-five to thirty thousand people. And then if you throw a gun barrel in it, it's whole, uh, residence gun barrel, the rate of library, or it's a signif, it's the only community in all of it. Low rate of cardholders, but they almost, uh, the majority of them. So they, rather they go to North Boulder or to Maine, they go to Meadows. Maine is after Meadows, and I think it's just the easy, ease of transit, right? You get off, it's right there off of. Parkway and there's a parking lot, and so that's where they were going, so gun barrel. I think we cannibalized some of Meadows' numbers, but there is the base population around Meadows to support. I, I mean, it's the second largest, it's the smallest location, will be the smallest location. It's the second largest uh service population to have, um. Uh, the trend on digital materials, so digital materials, I can go on forever, I spent three, four years, four years. On this, but the jump was recently was interesting, so um. When the Kindle came out in two thousand and ten. Digital materials were a blip on the uh consumption of, of, of reading materials.
Nationally.
Not just for libraries, everywhere, like two percent. And it jumped to twenty uh and twenty-two in a short period, between twenty-ten and twenty-twelve. Twenty-twelve, as a result of the Kindle explosion of people reading books online. Amazon wants to sell libraries, uh, books, we know digital, very few digital resources did, so it was a hell of a battle, right? We were paying stupid amounts of money for ebooks. And now typically, we don't even own them, we rent them, so we lease the ebooks, uh, the, the, the part, the amount of money that we spend. In that one point six million dollar budget, it's nearly half, uh, goes towards ebook materials. Uh, and that's merely to catch up with that trend. And then what we also saw during the pandemic, which is very interesting, and I don't think it's gonna ease up, um. It jumped from nationally twenty-two percent of the consumption to well over thirty. So that was the second major leap in terms of people moving towards digital. And within our libraries, uh, it now constitutes a twenty-two to thirty-eight percent of all of our circulation. As equals, um, that is, uh, you know, now that we lease them, it ain't great, but uh, it's cost effective. You don't have to have space to show the book, you don't have to have a shover boat to shove it. Um, we still have waiting lists because uh digital distributors will not allow us to simultaneously. Circulate an ebook even though we have the technological capability to do it. And have agreed that we would even pay it, uh, they won't do it, you have to go on a book at a time, sort of like uh fair use on first sale. Like you would do the physical book, we have to do the same thing with digital books, so we have to buy tons of copies. Uh, and it is expensive on the initial phase, and I think the team, we constantly look at, it's like. Like, yeah, within six times more than a consumer could buy on Amazon. Nevertheless, um. If it works, it works, right? And then it's probably more costly to buy digital books. The dead time is. Digital things goes out, it's off your card, next person lives, so immediately, so there's a better churn on those books. That also increases their circulation, so the numbers. Yes.
I'm just thinking about our last board meeting and the, the fine treasures report that you have and your comments about. Assets and having that asset used related to, was your focus on shelves and. So I just wondered about how, you know, just how you sort of the digital element that fits into what sort of the assets. Over time, that, that's. You know, in terms of.
A piece is over a year, you can count on the asset, under a year, you can.
So our leases for number of skirts, so we, we lease books based on, so if it goes out twenty-six times, we have to buy it again. Uh, if it goes out hundred, so I, I love it, I hate it, crisis for that, it's fairly cost effective, it goes out twenty-six times. If it's a bomb and only goes out twice, well, we just paid too much for the book. Um, fortunately, Boulder's a pretty heavy reading public and been pretty discriminating in terms of what kind of books we choose.
What a market, I think, yeah, yeah, but I'm just thinking about just in terms of how we're, you know, sort of tracking like sort of our assets of a. Library to like, you know, just that whole reference to, you know.
Yeah.
In that traditional sense of what we all.
Yeah.
System.
Yeah. And there's still pretty, ours is stable, it's a steady. Um, there's no new database. That's a big part of what we do, the numbers are stable, but it's not the same. It's owned by.
Yeah.
Uh, in both USA.
Oh, I was just gonna say, so I have a fair number of friends to uh Boulder, but they actually do the digital. Check out the books from the Denver Library, because the Denver Library has a huge catalog, and I mean, they can, they're a much bigger city. Um, and I was just, I, I don't know, like, when our collection of digital resources is banned, then the interest you must see. Like, I'll, I'll check. Yeah, a little bit more available.
Yeah, you know, I, I think we were a little behind the curve, I mean, I know that I'm out here, so the library, book library. Have been a part of digital consumption. So there was a lot of, you know, pissing and competitiveness and all this other kind of nonsense, and many libraries were not. Uh, at all, and Boulder was uh the second highest contributor that I've got here. Um, but way under span, like we were not, that's, that catch up, the reason why we're spending so much now is catching up with consumption. Like the way people consume reading materials, yeah, the libraries have to be sales, right? And we were not, and you know, like some communities, like, so now, well. You know, they're spending close to seven hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars a year on people's materials. When I got here, it was less than forty. Um, but for some perspective, like Louisville and Lafayette, I think Louisville's been. Three thousand. This is like ten years, and Lafayette's been set. Maybe the only library that in the consortium that we were purchasing with was Westminster. Uh, they were buying a number of things digitally because. Uh, they were buying a number of things digitally because, I, but I don't know, like, so long, it's been virtually not. Um, now, uh, you know, there's, we, we still belong to that consortium. Everyone was agreeing to pay what they can. It felt unfair to us to be purchasing stuff for people in Lafayette, Louisville and Groovefield and all the libraries that were in that consortium. But that's kind of why the waiting list was so long. There is an offer now, which is what we're utilizing. And I don't love it, but it's what we're doing because we have to. So we purchase materials that are circulated only on Boulder library card holders. Before they are able to be shared, Louisville, Lafayette, uh, or any customers that have a library card from another place. And that's not in the spirit of library sharing much, but at the time, right now, it's kind of necessary. Uh, we now, we moved away from ours, our consortium to be joined with Marmot. Um, Marmot Consortium is much larger. It's large. Um, I went to their meetings last year for the first time. And they have this push, they want everybody to be sharing ebooks and stuff and local numbers and like. Like now, it's that many more libraries who are in this consortium. And if you looked at all the money spent, a Boulder public library of, you know, maybe a hundred and some libraries, we spent. Thirty three to forty percent of all the money spent on books would be promoted. And I'm like, yeah, we're not gonna share. And they want everybody to do this, they're sharing things. So we just, we came back and we increased the amount of books that we're buying. That are exclusively for the library customers. And contrary to what they're hoping for, and you know, I, I told them, like, until you give me a guaranteed minimum, and I know the percentage of our collections, they're still not done. I'm just not gonna share, like, we can't tell you.
Just to make sure I'm understanding, so if a patron logs into Marmot. For physical book, those books are shared, and I can pull from anybody, but if I log in for an ebook, I'm only logging into.
Well, you, for our collection will only, will, will show up, but if you were living in Groovefield. And you put your name on the list, you're at the bottom of the list. If you're on. Boulder card holder, you go on the list, uh. It's booked, it's only the home, you go on whatever.
That's interesting, but the, the user doesn't know that.
No.
Yeah, probably what position you are in.
But I, but like, when you could go down, like Boulder people keep, you know, which is kind of interesting.
But you could be a, excuse me, there's a, sorry, but you could be a Boulder card holder and not necessarily be in the district. So how do we make sure that Boulder district holders are aligned?
We don't, this is a small percentage, whether or not, I mean, not, not.
Yeah, but I mean, it should be something we should be able to align.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how far we want to go in terms of the restrictions, like, so as soon as the list is exhausted. Uh, and after a year, we make it better. So like, if, if it's, if, if we've exhausted the list of people in Boulder when we book, um. But see, with, with purchasing books, we're looking at ratios, right? So if there are more than three people waiting in a book, we buy another book. With ebooks, if there are more than four people. And so it's a complicated thing that we're using, but we're looking at Boulder card holders for that ratio. Because every other, we shouldn't be looking at their card. So whatever ratio, if they use a ratio at all, don't think they do. So as soon as it kicks over. And, and so since we found through our list. Then, then it's available. And anybody, like, I think, we don't currently share with all of them, are we? Do we share with any libraries that used to be in the.
Yeah. And so if I remember when we looked at library patrons and their addresses in the past, it was a small number. That were outside Boulder, they had Boulder library, if you're assuming the district. It was less than ten percent, maybe less than five percent. They get, it was a smallish number.
Uh, it's larger than that, but, um. Yeah, so we cut it in half. Uh, there were currently, uh, with the district, we added about seventeen thousand. They're all, if you look at that.
Apply for a library card, you don't have to say.
Uh, yeah, they do, but they. But I mean, like, my address, even if they're first, it's a ball group, it's a. And so I would say.
Right, well, but I mean, like, so when people apply for a library card, we don't make them through the district.
No, and the Colorado has state library cards in any state. And many people living in. But they are, we don't, I mean, and the address, it's funny, you don't have to look, it's like, how many people like live in downtown Longmont? And so we just, we map all those to that in a patient. We have, we can, we can pull numbers, but it's not thirteen people in Longmont that, like, clearly in, in city of Longmont. That have Boulder library. And it was a matter of the fact that the libraries. So people, especially for the number of incomers that come into Boulder, um, like, I don't have any, but it's crazy. People would work in Boulder, they, they become a moderate, because they use the library. But they're a bit, but does matter, and, and it does begin to matter more. So, you know, the first question, all the colleagues in the Flatiron Library Consortium later dissolved and went to Marmot, but. We still exist in terms of sharing, we have a courier that goes between libraries. They're like, are you gonna leave? Now, it's like, uh, the Flatiron Library Consortium, we did to save money. And to expand the collection that the public have access to. That's, that was it. There were two objectives.
And to buying.
Eh, to certainly set the buying power, but we, we carry the weight of buying power. And now we've joined Marmot. Which again, it was to save money from being from the F L C and to expand the collection that is available to patrons. But now we are like the biggest fish. So as we grow, um. You know, I, we'll see where it comes. Hopefully other libraries will catch up.
I mean, is it possible to join together with like that, with like across the nation? With buying power and force, price it down.
Sam had a question. Oh, it was just, um, I couldn't understand the materials. Spending, uh, digital versus physical instead of digital by half. And then, how does it, is there an average price of a digital copy or is that based on pay per lease? I don't, you know, buying a physical book, like, yeah, but I'm sure.
So there are distributions, the distribution occurs in. Books from a lot of different. So release the book. And we leased it for, like, it's like, it, it works out, you know. Releasing it, if it goes out twenty six times, we pay a dollar a server, right? And, and then we buy it again. If it goes out two times, we pay thirteen dollars to serve it, and it's way more expensive than physically. So I don't know, we can, we can do this deep dive at something later, I mean, this is what I spent. I'm my career, I'm like, so for a physical book, like for a physical book. We can loan it as many times as we want until it falls apart, but I also have to factor in the cost of staff. Factor in space on the shelf, I factor in the time it takes for staff members to take. The new shelf comes back, the cost of the sorter, uh, that comes in, that is an electronic thing that sorts books. So all those factors into the cost for the physical book, and the cost of a physical book, um, has without. Variation, Boulder's pretty efficient, but it's right around three and a half to four dollars a person. So every time a physical book goes out, the, the cost associated with putting into that is about four dollars, and it's in perpetuity. Now, we can keep the book on the shelf as long as we want, we don't, because it doesn't circulate in a way, but if it's a book that's moving, you could get a hundred. We can get it to have a circus, then it's really, it, it was, the cost keeps going down.
Yeah, but then you sort of think, well, we have these physical, we have these facilities, right? Like, what are these facilities for? And that sort of looks like shelves, right? You know, and what do we use, you know, we want people to come in the doors and be attendants, you know? So, you know.
And we were, there was a, there was a crisis, right? And so. The question then, if you go back and look at our history, two thousand and ten, eleven, oh, it was like bricks and clips. Not bricks and clicks. And so which, which way are we going with public libraries? And, um, the interesting thing that happened that we didn't foresee. Is that reading as a whole went up all across, all across the world. So physical items actually increased as well. So the reading public got into reading with digital books. It just increased the pie, the pie didn't, it wasn't a limited pie, reading consumption actually went up dramatically. And the other interesting thing was, was that physical visits to the library accelerated. So that was, uh, a strange phenomenon, it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense, but it was like, if you think like. Oh God, people just got super jacked about reading, obviously, you need to make tons of money, but not just on digital books, everything, physical books, Randy books. Self-publishing, everything took off, and people started. Then, now, I don't, I haven't seen the numbers on that recently. As far as the publishing industry goes, the pie during the pandemic didn't expand. It, it's truly the case that. Digital ate, uh, part of what was happening. And, and so what we're seeing, that is partially also why the result from deep volume of visits. Now, can the visits go back up? I imagine that they can, that's what we're betting on right now for the short run, for the next two years, but I think my phone took a six last.
Oh, I just, I mean, this is such an interesting conversation because like the digital content, I mean. It's a digital globalized world, right? Like, um, and I remember when, um, a lot of the book banning was happening in Florida. I think it was the Brooklyn Library basically put out there that, you know, hey kids in Florida, um. We, we have all of these books, you are welcome to get a Brooklyn library card and access to books and like, I mean, that is. I, I just thought that was so, but then now I'm thinking about like, oh my gosh, can we afford to do? Really interesting.
But I think you like, had to be a teenager or something.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, so then the question was, did we consolidate? So actually, yes, and, um. These efforts, and so we had, uh, tried, uh, to, she appealed. Queens, which was leading on, so in June. And so Colorado libraries to purchase an I L S, um, a manager system and distribution company. And we've been to create a loan for the libraries to own part of the. Mean of distribution. And it kind of collapsed, Queens was problematic, King County is such a big library system, it has. They really only everything, but yeah, we were, we started doing a lot of things which were, uh, you know, illegal. Um, we seriously considered suing Amazon, um, we were, uh, you know, we were fighting. That was supposed to be proprietary in terms of, so we had to encourage other libraries to be. Uh, disclosing what prices, uh, distributor you're selling them ebooks at. Um, my good friend and colleague got up at a major conference and said. You're not doing me any favors. And I was negotiating with Vio and he was, I mean, he was the guy at the major conferences, but the publishing industry is dead. The bullets already through the brain, we're just waiting till the pocket fall, and I'm like. So like ten years later, Vio has kind of. Uh, they're not against it, they're gonna go, some publisher. Um, just canceled selling to libraries for over two years and ultimately came back to the table.
So, we're, we're at an hour and a half, which is biologically the longest that I would want, um, folks to sit, so. And I'm wondering, Jen, you want to ask me a question? We talked about that, um, in answer.
We want to like talk about, I, I just, I, this brings to like, somebody might have said this when I was not in the room, just a strategic question or like. It seems like there's a dynamic tension between the public asking us to. Open more branches and more places or for more hours and. That digital circulation is the thing that is going up, and, and so, you know. How to think about that, and maybe you're gonna get to this with a rumor, but like, there's, yeah, there's a sort of, it feels like there's a tension there. So, uh, but let's have a biological break.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, okay, great.
So see you at the bottom, yeah. And we're fine on time, I worry that we're.
Thanks, Eric.
Dave and I worked out.
Where can you get coffee somewhere?
Yeah, so that's one of those. It's very silly of me. If you see it, it dropped out of my bag in my home. Okay, you know, so. Not, not clear if it made it into the bag originally. Yeah, I just started using this little like tablet, writing tablet, and it has a pen that does not magnetically attach very well. If anybody sees like a little weird. It is, I'm, it's completely. If you juice is.
Look like any other public thing works. Like the old stylus is roughly. Excuse me, there's a, there's a Kindle, how long it takes to read a book back that I. So if you have a Kindle. If you have a Kindle and you have a book on it, that's why it was.
We kind of, I appreciate. It's just three eleven guest destination.
It's not just physical books. It's a lot of other things to do, as Johnny reminded me. You know, when you put a book. But we, we track and calculate all of those kinds of things. So like, when, just imagine, so you now want. Put the book on the hold with the shelf or wrapper and name it, which has been a growing part of the business in libraries. It took off and now probably represents. It's more, right? So you add, you almost double the cost of an individual sir. By putting a pen, it's a wonderful convenience, right? So people will love it, um, when the person puts a hook on the hole in the computer or you're sitting there and just. Blipping through and browsing and you fit that thing, put it on hold, well then, the next day a list comes out, basement, a staff member finds that list. Staff member gets a card, they're walking through the entire library, retrieving the book. Or you putting in the card, it goes to the basement, somebody runs it through, it appeared. When the other person takes the book, the stairs, the shelf, I'm going to create figure out. It's an awesome service. We, we've pulled, I've pulled on multiple times in libraries. Like, there are a lot of people who say, like, if you say, what would you do? Like, they, they say, this is the only reason. It's my only reason I'm coming into this building today is to pick my hole. And so like, it's not a service that we can just do away with. Um, and it's very convenient, uh, folks love it, and we can never do away with it, but it is like now. Uh, it's a significant. Of the overall cost of the operation. So just to know, I mean, and that's just one, that's a big one, uh, because everybody seems to think like. We could just do away with it. No, we can't, we can't, we can never go back. Uh, we decided to make it convenient for customers, and guess what? I love it. Um, libraries are notorious for doing things like, um. That we buy something, it's really cool, everybody wants it, and so what we do is we ratchet it down. The only problem when the holds becomes a problem is if you don't pick it up. So if you know, you're not, that's the thing to tell people, you know, you're not gonna pick it up, just take the whole or suspend your holds if you're gonna be out of town. Those are the kind of conveniences that we built in the system that ultimately save us a ton of money, right? So if you put sixty books on hold, you don't pick them up. Like, if you take them up, read them, then awesome.
And and just a quick comment, that is a decision that came into library commission. So that's an example of the sort of thing you said, and it's in the context of. Should we extend the number of holds you can have because then there was an immediate growth in all these costs?
Yeah, but there is something related though. And so. As a commissioner over the past three years, that has ever been a conversation about. That, right? And you're sort of during the pandemic time when, you know, we weren't even doing some of that, so many people couldn't go to a library. So I don't know that. There's ever been like sort of a marketing awareness, right? Like, this is your cost, right? Like, as a consumer, so as resident. Yeah, thing, right? So I mean, I just think it's something to know about, right? And to know and sort of consider. You know, did you know? It's just something for us to be aware.
Yeah.
Right? To in terms of how we do market and what. And what services we provide.
I agree with you. And one of the things I'd love, because we'd love to see the library do is basically a budget plan online for for your library books. But how do I, as a user, affect the library? Just that kind of education.
Yeah, like what's, you know, the free stuff, right? Like, yeah, but but there's something. You know, they do, you know, some people are bigger users, right? Or they have more costs. Consumer costs, right? Like of that.
So I bet we, we can revisit and do, I wanted to do this. I really wanted to lay out the roadmap for this document, specifically that we've been working on as a leadership team. And initially, I'm going to bring everybody here and. Not, not necessary, but maybe to party on that. Uh, but you know, like every single uh. Piece here opens into ten. Things which open into ten things. So it's the workflow that we follow, but I wanted you guys just to have a. Handle a little here. So obviously the preparation for Gun Barrel, Novo. With space, with space news, the new construction. And if we need a lot of new administrative systems. So we all kind of. Since public is going to love Novo and Denver and, you know, all of those things. Way more than they care about the culture of libraries and staff. But in terms of, at least for me, I think one of our critical things is that. Idea of how we uh continue to nurture the culture, because I can't say enough about the library staff. It is a can do. Pleasant, respectful, great human beings, like as a crew, and we need to be able to maintain that culture as we're expanding it. By literally, we're increasingly deciding ourselves. To a person, everyone that we've had and so forth, I mean, I meet with the new staff, they're amazing, they're going to fit, they're going to be great, they're going to. They're going to expand what we are capable of doing, not only physically, but you know, you know, in better decisions we made and that kind of stuff. But it's a critical kind of. Component which uh you guys, you guys probably won't even see that much of as well, uh, but it has a lot of feel that work can do. And then the other two big programs were, you know, under the active building spaces. Uh, and increasing community outreach. This kind of leads to that. So that tension uh. Is real and libraries have been experiencing it for some, and what I can say with absolute certainty and, you know. And I know, but I think you were doing the right thing. From twenty thirteen to twenty nineteen, uh, we were hitting every single metric. At a rate that was, I kept telling the mission, this is unsustainable. Uh, and yet we kept going year after year after year. It's like these, and it was, and we were an outlier. I was looking, I look at all the libraries in the state and we have access to national data, and I saw what was happening in other libraries. I don't know. I think it's partly because we track data and what we pay attention to, you are able to uh manipulate. To some extent, not manipulate, but we we focus on, if you focus on the books that are on the display case all the time. Then I guarantee you that it's going to be a really nice display and you're going to, more books will go out as the displays up. There are little things that what you focus on makes a difference. And so the fact that we are kind of data driven and we. Analyzing data from a lot of different places, I think, had something to do with metrics. I also think it was just like that there was a pent up demand in Boulder for. Actual services, right? And so the fact that we were on this crazy upward trajectory through twenty nineteen. Against all odds and with some, you know, it was the busiest library in the state for visits by a launch. Uh, it was the second highest library in the state for program techs by. You know, the only library that we just was quite willing, I think, their council. I mean, every single metric we were doing was crazy.
Great.
Awesome. And so that trajectory that we were on. Part of the plan for this year and next is to complete that. We're completing, we're completing all the things we said we were going to do in twenty eighteen. Um, those things were funded by thirty five hundred of our neighbors, people who said this is what they wanted the library to. I believe that we can get back on that trajectory and signs show that we're on, right? That you go back with earlier slides, things are starting to tip up. I don't know where the cap is, right? I don't, I don't really know because the numbers we are producing in my mind in some ways were already. Somewhat unsustainable. That kind of level grows here, here. Some point you're going to level out, right? I would assume. At some point, you're going to level out with a limited population, with a limit that doesn't cover that much. And so um, the tension, right? So the tension. We're already seeing like in twenty twenty three, and to some extent you'll see it in twenty twenty two, the divergence back, right? So they, at one point. In uh, what year was it? I mean, there, there was uh, in twenty twenty, right? So in twenty twenty, digital circulations almost matched physical circuits. We were closed for two or three months. Like there were all kinds of things that happened, but nevertheless, they almost. Touched. And yet then they started to diverge again and that divergence continues. Not saying that digital demand from digital circulation goes down, but as a percentage of our overall circulation. It's probably going to trend now, my assumption is, is that's going to trend because I've seen it over the last ten years. It's going to turn towards the national average. And so physical stuff will come back as we begin to offer programs and snow. Uh, as we start, the cafe opens, all those things, we can be back on a downward trajectory towards physical use. There is a massive uh. Pig in the pie, whatever you want to call it, around consumption of physical books and young people. If you look at. Uh, consumption habits of people under the age of twenty five, they are reading physical books at a rate. Unlike any other generation in existence. And I don't. I was talking to someone, I talked to people. They were sick and tired of, they see it as a separation. In the same way that you may see work and it was a separation. They see digital life and physical life separation. So reading a physical book is a angle into another realm. Other than the digital, wherein most of their life, social connections, all this. I don't know what the answer is, but I think that um. We don't know how that will also shape um the libraries in the next decade. If you watch these trends, which I do, like, there is a weird, weird, wonderful, I've, I've been in the book trade my entire life. It was in. I was selling books, I was in the rare book trade before I got into libraries. It's been my life and, and now. Situation of books. Unlike anything I've ever seen in my entire life, that we. See massive things, a little tic tac where people are talking about the way they organize their books. Like, it's a, it's a, it was a phenomenon on Zoom in terms of backgrounds. Your library will die. And so this is not something that's happened in the last hundred years. That was the province of, of wealthy, stupid human, well, you know. Millions of dollars and showing off their Gutenberg Bible, but now suddenly like learning people and. People online and social media have turned into this weird. Understand that there is a, 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 it's not necessarily, it's not nostalgia, either. They're actually reading the books and we're using them as objects within the backdrop, which sets them for their role, for a different worlds and a different experience. I don't know if you've even seen these um, the pop up on the coast, there's one opening in Denver at the end of March, um, where it's a reading book. You're not reading the same book. You all come together and in some cases hundreds of people come together with their books to, they read their physical books and then they take a break. And they talk for forty five minutes about what they're reading with destruction. And then they go back, you read their books, and there's a DJ and then. But there are some things that we have not leveraged and there's something, there's always a weird kind of turning in that um. And that. Reading, I mean, reading is so much, right? Like that, and, and the literacy component of it is one. But the things that we get for ourselves personally is something that I, I, it's almost spiritual. I can't. I can't quite grasp it, but we're a part of that. So recognizing we're part of that, I don't give any doubts. I mean, we're betting, you know, the farm for the next two years, that we are going to build backward that positive trajectory. On every single map. That's what we've done. That's the plan for the, for the master plan and order, order for us to get through twenty twenty six at the point in which. You know, Gun Barrel will be up and running. And of course, there's questions of cannibalization and all the other kind of things, but we don't really know the upper end of the market. And like what we saw in two thousand and ten, the exposure of ebooks, um, it just led to more people reading books. It didn't, nothing went down, every. Uh, is that possible again? I suspect it's possible. We're betting on it. We're building a library and, and, you know, or opening, building a library. There probably needs another. So that's what came back, like, why do we do this? And so I know this whole connection to, I've seen a million times before and always. There is, there is, I don't have the map here today, but I could show you that the uh density of cardholders per household. Is relative to your distance from the bus, right? It makes perfect sense, but it makes sense even within Baltimore. So the lowest. Density of cardholders in the United. There's no surprise, like it, 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 and it's men who statistically significantly. So around Maine or Meadows, the density of bones is higher. And so when we did the master plan, I mean, we were still, we, we were operating in the city, but also. Under theories that I truly believe in, um, that people won't walk the way. There is that fifteen minute neighborhood, which the city of Boulder has pitched and sold for. You know, decades, um, is one that we believed in and we, we wrote the, you know, master plan with the idea of a gun barrel library because. Every single person who uses the library in Gun Barrel said that they had to drive more than fifteen minutes to get to like. And so that was the reason why the Gun Barrel Library. Same reason as Novo, there was a transportation issue in terms of being able to get to the library. So. We're continuing with the plan. Um, we won't, we now have the resources to be able to deliver both on the digital front and the physical front. Um, but it's kind of a critical part of the, I, I believe um, that we can get back on that upward trajectory. But we'll know by twenty twenty six, doesn't matter if I think it, we'll know by twenty twenty six if we're moving in that direction. And at that point, we are on the cusp of beginning a new strategy. And if the data shows that it's not materializing, we're not materializing in areas, and downtown doesn't come back. Then we have another discussion. If downtown does come back and grows and the branches are also carrying that weight. Then we may be thinking like, we need another library on the down mark. But just, I, you know, I don't know where the trajectory will go. But by twenty twenty six, I want to ensure we will have a proof. The last thing I want to talk about, this is where I've already kept thousands of books, but uh, was that trajectory between twenty five and twenty. And so um. This brief map is really, you know, it's part and parcel with the uh. With the master plan, part and parcel, some of those exceptions that we've had before, I mean, the critical point is that we barely. Begin the next level of planning in twenty twenty six, and that's the point that it is. So obviously, gender all opens in twenty twenty five. Uh, we, twenty six, we start redoing some of the branding and hopefully being able to get to better understanding what the community wants to hear from us. And I don't tend to look exactly, because I think that I'm a data nerd, I've never. Met people who are as interested in, you know, data that I haven't had, not alone the data that I have access to. Um, you know, Carnegie renovations, they're going to be substantial. Like this is a project with foundation asking like, what are you going to need? Number. Man, we're, we've, we said it's like a million, it easily be three, it can easily be ten. What are we, what are we going to want from that? What's the community going on? We'll have that opportunity when the time comes, but like, it's a scalable project, right? We can fix the building and make it sing, make it work for another year, probably for a million bucks, maybe just. Um, but yeah, we want to meet that amazing example. That could be a amazing little project. And then the other big one right after that, which, which without uh, you know, in terms of capital, things and what people care about. The Meadows and Gun Barrel leases will expire, and I think, you know, we'll have to make a decision. Um, the, the Meadows one is one that was obvious to us when we did the master plan. We didn't recruit in the master plan, because it didn't want to sound greedy, but uh, we outgrew that space a long time ago. Uh, we either need to expand it within that mall or, or in the general area. We're not going to be able to get too far from that location because it is absolutely prime location for a library. It just happens to be behind mall. Like, and I think if we were on the front side of the mall, our numbers would probably be twice as high. And so like, that'll be a discussion we'll have to have when we get to uh, at twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, time for this, by twenty nine. My assumption. In that Meadows. And, you know, what, what do we want? We're seeing the branches are going gangbusters. Uh, is that a place to build a library or buy, building and renovate? Something that's two times as expensive, you know, about three times as expensive. If people want a suburban library. And that's really what they want to go to. They don't have a big parking lot where they can see the front door, then we'll have to be that. Right there.
What is your ice cream?
So can you just say again, why website revamp because it's um, like dot there?
No, it was meant to be a. You know, like, like, I, I did just look at this thing and I realized that some much bigger things are not. So in your previous pages, like, I noticed that we have, like. The facility's master plan is like buried in a bottom sheet with a third line, a small segment, but it's. So that is, hopefully by the time. We have begun the industry uh, uh, better. So that is, that's the time, I think by the end of this year, I mean, we're beginning now, but. Oh, one person, Maria, you've met her, you had others, um, but that we begin to um. More deliberately uh. Design and experience for the public to provide both, to get the information that they need and provide us with the information. That they need. It's, it's a two-way street uh communications and that, that. Really begins to take shape in twenty twenty five. I think it'll be a major part of all of our efforts, right? Because. And I've had this conversation with, you know, some of the leadership team, is that we don't want. You know, programs is not going to drive the bus, right? Uh, collections and books don't fly a bus, but we also don't want the communication to drive the bus. And so there is a means by which all three of these have to be four of these, all the different parts of the library need to come together. We're not nearly there because the city's been branding most of the staff who have been here for. And it didn't really do ongoing community engagement. So for us to build something new for everyone to buy in. I see it as the earl. So we, we, we can get to the point. Maybe not everybody does buy in, but we can get to the point in a year's time where um. All of the elements, the library. Talking the walk as well as we walk. Does that make sense, Vina? We, we need to be able to engage the community better and solicit from them information about what they want to see from the public library. Uh, as much as we, as a board and me and the leadership team design and experience. Because what they really want, and we're, we've seen growth, building sixty one, reading buddies. Uh, they're looking for a collaborative experience. And my hope is that we get to a point where. It's a lot more than reading buddies in public sixty one, where we are collaborating. I would like to see us get to the point where. There is a mutual responsibility that both the community and the library, the library thinks to a community and the community thinks to a library. Uh, but that's a build, that's a major build, especially coming from where we have been. Even getting the staff together online about the idea that we uh, making decisions about what we advertise.
So it seems like sort of more of a programmatic thing than a website revamp.
You know, so I work. It's the engaging. Yeah, so unfortunately, um. I take full responsibility. I, I wrote up a bunch of notes and I don't really do much. Um, some. Good soul put this all together for me and I.
So it is, it is the marketing.
I deeply appreciate it, yeah. Yeah, it's the marketing. We understand. I, I know, I know a lot of people see marketing as. I don't know how to see it. I understand the marketing is like, I know. If that's what markets, and so building that marketing platform. Is going to take us at least a year. And then getting here, and then actually the work of engagement is, uh, substantial, like, um. Example that I always use. Yes. The, 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 the oil leaking the goal, they, they, yeah, they're all leaking the goal. So the oil's pouring out and, and mouse just insanely amount. But before Obama got to the beach in Florida. They knew exactly what, and so they knew that he was going to get down on one knee. They knew he was going to pick up the sand, let it run through his fingers and then get up and give a speech. Like, they knew. They didn't, there was no doubt in their minds. He wasn't going to go down there and rage against the oil companies. They knew what to do and we weren't that, we're flying blind in that sense. Like we don't know. What to do. The only way to do that is to better understand and engage the community in terms of what they see and how to react to. After the bathrooms, I was actually, I'm, I'm like. I was just like going out there. And so, you know, stupidly, I said, we're never going to let it happen again. A year or a year, for a year. And we did it. But, but, you know, I'm not committed to a second year. I mean, I'm glad I didn't say that on. But, you know, we did it for a year and now we need, what we really need to do is. It's going to happen again. Uh, it already has, right? We already had a incident where somebody was smoking a breath, right? Like. Um, how do we mitigate the cost associated with, uh. Contamination? That's the real issue. Like, is that? Yeah, it's like, when is somebody going to do it again?
Have you ensured that the public feels safe? Will we be the communication piece? And, and I would add that during the master plan, the library did a really great job of this kind of engagement. But that was something, I think you managed to chop the city out of a little bit of money to do that. And so I think this is looking at the sustained effort to do that kind of engagement and outreach, which is great. And if I can, I wanted to just make a couple of other comments as you guys look forward to the strategic plan. Um, I think you'll find that planning and land use plays surprising work in the master plan. Two thousand and eighteen, up to that burden, she did a great job. But for example, these folders, is there really going to be residential development in these folders or not? You know? So I think something, you don't know how likely it is you can persuade a land use geek to onboard. Um, but this might be an opportunity for you to think about the value of it that could help you understand the land use and demographic issues. Um, because I think that will be a big performance as you're looking at. Then borrow another, how it fits and no, but whether you need something else, you know, yada, yada. And then the other thing I wanted to just comment was on Meadows. I would encourage you to think about Meadows. Sooner rather than later, because it's a. Property owner, it's out of state, like it's a trust, it's been managed by a number of. Real estate companies, they're notoriously difficult to deal with, takes a very long time to deal with them. And if you want to do anything other than. Re, recontinue the existing lease, that's going to have a financial hit. And it's also going to have a lot of, you know, where do you go into it right now? Just, you know, right now, the library doesn't effectively doesn't pay rent. Um, I'm going to, it doesn't with an exaction out of a P U D, but it's that space. And the landlord can't do anything else with that space because it's limited to library purposes. But if you want to move someplace else, like the exflation building that's vacant on the, you know, baseline should be ideal, then it's a whole new conversation and. It's going to take some time softening up the landowner and working with them. And, you know, that might be something you just want to. Start early and put some thought into it. Sure. There's some opportunity. There's always empty space in that shopping center. The turnover has been horrible. Um, but they're not, they're, you know, if I can tell that, it's very hard to. So.
Yeah, I agree. I bet I was on this one that this. Yeah, we'll be talking, we'll be, that opportunity will present itself long for a next decision, but we have to be. Thinking through, uh, fully what we want to do, uh, in that area. And it's ideal. And honestly, I mean, it could not only for the community itself, but. If, as the planning department suggests, that growth is slated to occur. You know, uh, from whatever thirty, thirtieth to sixty third, uh, Meadows could offset some of that for a period of time, right? So Meadows is the logical place that would offset, uh. Uh, demand for library services. Uh, in the interim, while we figured out exactly where the density was going to occur. And the bus lines, or the other kind of stuff, if it turns out to be fifty, that's about fast. It's a wild guess, but. Um, it could be somewhere else and Meadows would be the place that would probably be very rough of. Of expansion. Now, again, like. Who knows? Maybe they use the planning reserve, although that seems like a, uh, such a remote shot of things are, I think, you all know, north of, right? So if it were to happen, like if somebody council, a council decides to do it. And it does happen in three years, like, oh, well, no, those too small, like we, that just like, oh, shoot, um, in wait, initial plans for it, we. We were thinking of building the, the library for, but it's just horrible. We couldn't build a library that.
Yeah. Yeah. So as we look back on all the information you gave to share, um, I think of, of our responsibilities, having free development, funness, spirit. A budget, but it's valuable, whatever. Um, and strategic is generative. So this, if it is, if you're planning here, you know, it's all out in statute. Generative is, hey, what else could you do there? So I guess I would invite everyone just to. Even if you have to take a minute and think about it, what are the questions that you have? And maybe there are things that they could answer right now, or maybe it's just prompts to say, well. Gosh, you said this thing, let me think about this other, like, want to be. So I would invite you to have. Either a form of question, something that you might be able to answer that came up, or, hey, you know, this. My left knee started twitching, started talking about that other stuff.
Well, just thinking about, um. Land use planning and the comp plan process. So it seems like we just need to make sure that we're involved in that and have staff presence. In that process. As this cycle begins and is underway, we're sort of a, a new player in that, that would maybe pay attention to us.
In my experience is that's going to take some pushing. We tried to involve our staff in the last comp, so we paid the planning was like one. Hmm. So, you know, and, and we sent the commission, sent an entire long list of, here's all the parts of the plan that libraries should be in because we are a part of it and.
Well, I think though, in this cycle, I mean, we have, the I G A is a reference point, right? We included all of the elements related to comp plan in that I G A. So I think we angled that in.
And that's exactly my.
Every step of the way, right?
I said.
Yes.
Not explored the port in the city, that's the deal. So they gave me permission to do so at one point. And I kind of started negotiating a deal and found out like, it's almost, I just backed off. But in, in other communities, right? So like, name it, like Chicago, San Francisco. The library has said previous, Douglas County, right? So, uh. Development is king. I like, so entrepreneurship, but development drives entrepreneurship, uh, and, and, and most Colorado that's true. And so developers are very interested. Real estate. You know, what, look, look who voted for a library, guarantee your real estate agents did, right? They all believe, they know the value. They, and so developers also understand that value. And it is possible, right? This won't be with the bus in the city because the city does do this, then we begin to work with the developer. Right? So that, that, that opportunity presented itself again. Developers, I had multiple developers reach out and one said, I'm going to do it in a while. And. Uh, if you just agree. Uh, and so that was, you know, it never happened. It didn't materialize, but it was a lot stretching for me on, and I've told you that, but, uh. There will be opportunities that present themselves for developers. You know what? Outflowing library, uh. It's like, I gigantic apartment complex. So you, so I see, and you go with me against two tops of the playing board for an extra two feet. And so then we'll be in that place, right? Or, or we'll be signing up with somebody who wants to have a, an exemption for. Tax for twenty years. And that, that'll be something a lot to talk about, like the, if they're going to do this major development, but there'd be exemptions. Tax for twenty years. And so the library district in that sense will be very good with the city, uh, because we may have a bus of interest at, uh. Theory and being on that side rather than on the side. Which is cities. A lot of open blocks, I wouldn't maybe on the side and say, I'm great disparage now. I, I just want you to be, as planning happens, like, it's not simple. I mean, we should definitely be hand in hand with the. With, um. Comprehensive. And, you know, the people mostly know.
I don't think we do.
I know. There's something different people, yeah.
I felt too, if you can find somebody in the community, you know, who's a library. Who signs and can be really, really helpful. And can I add one other thing? If I go just from my experience in the master plan, you know, you guys, when you get into the strategic plan, you guys are going to be all busy. And staff, I think, will do a great job of giving. Input. Doing everything, but you guys have the opportunity. What's the message for the next strategic? You know, the message in two thousand and eighteen was, where's the money? I think all that's without finances and news. Higher than the commission, the city would never have let staff go into the budget at all. And so, you know, now you don't have that impediment, but I think that's your power as a board is to be visioning and looking forward and thinking. What's the big picture that ties us all together? What's the next thing you're looking at the community? And that's the fun part too. But that will emerge as you go forward.
Yeah, I, um, one of the things I noticed, David, when you were talking about social groups was, um. You, you sort of talked about up to age twenty eight and then gray hairs. And I was just thinking about how I kind of belong to someone. I have found a few gray hairs, but, um, and I, I'm, I'm interested in this could just be sort of because of the life stage that sort of. Heavy library users, but I wonder if there's an opportunity. Um. To bring more of. By, you know, cohort into the library. I mean, I know a lot of people are interested in this sort of new midlife, like. In memoir writing or think, you know, things that like involve literature or, um. Things that are adjacent to library things, um, that, or activism or whatever, but it's, um. I don't know, it seems to me like, I, I'm always telling my friends, like, this is a great place to be. I'm like, well, what is there for me if I don't have kids? Or what if there's, what if, what is there for me as a busy professional? You know, and, and maybe that, maybe that's just, like, that would be historically breaking a mold, but like. I think it's, there's, there's some opportunity there to. Right? Yeah.
So. This is true. Robert. If you go into sex, we'll see, uh, seventy percent of the people in the stacks. Will be female and between. You know, twenty eight and.
Hmm.
It's a bit, they don't ask for us. They don't, they, they never stop and say like, well, you can help me like, but, but it's an interesting diagram. So they're there and I think what can we do more for them? I don't know. But, but we should explore it. And the other thing I think, you know, so library use is episodic, right? Without a doubt, some people said. Some people use it heavy, right? So, and that's possibly so. And it's highly episodic, like if you have small children. Your case, if you move after ninth grade, you don't really shop anymore. Like kids stay around library and then. There's a period of time, then college age students start coming back to use the wireless and socialize. A cafe will have something to do with that. And then, then you have kids and then you come back and then there's something followed. If you're a man and you're over fifty, you have a chance, you have a fifty, fifty shot of reading one book for the rest of your life. It's, it's not an easy target, but with girls, right? So that, that. One, twenty eight, one, fifty, fifty. But it would be. And it's the most, I haven't into the thing, but it is true. Um. Use of the library. Or non-use has no correlation.
To what?
Support.
Support.
And so if you, if we look at all the households in Boulder that they have. They are spiked. Have voted for the library and supported it or get money to the foundation as those people who are in the library every single day or use the library once. It, it, it doesn't make any sense, but if, if you're inside, you know, and you can talk to people, you know, there are people who will drive. I, they've never come in, or when they have this, they try to buy and they say, that's my public library.
Hmm.
And they believe in it. And, and, and so we have essentially. We have multiple marketing messages to occur, right? Like, so the users, we know. And then there are more specific categories of users. That we can drive a lot of energy towards, um, finding some of them less energy, like we could hit the fifteen minute households that speak. Spanish at home, we can hit them like, I think by walking around knocking on doors, honestly. But then there are other groups, like, I don't know how to reach. And there is a percentage of Boulder who never use the library. They never come in, they have no use for us whatsoever. And yet I know that they are as likely. To have voted for the library and or supported with financially. As those people who are that I see every day and weird, but true. Uh, so we, that, that's the multiple part of the message, right? We have to have a message that, that strikes both chords. Uh, and, you know, what is it that they believe in? Um, you know, is it brand, nostalgia, is it? Some experience they happen, they were kids, and your cardio, you couldn't get into two bucks. I have no idea, but we need to be able to find that message as well because building that support. Among the community at large for the things that we do, for the stories that I know. But then nobody else really gets to see, right? Like I, I see a person go through four years to. Get her high school diploma before her daughter does and learns English along the way, is raising four kids, it's pandemic. It's like, how does she do that? And that's such an amazing story. And, you know, that's what I should have been quoted in the New York Times about. And instead I get quoted about math in bathrooms, which happened over. Basically over the course of two months and, you know, seventeen days since twenty one days, like. But, you know, how do we begin to tell that other story, which is the story of like, oh my God, all the successes. And it's not us, we're not doing it. It's people. It's like people come to associate the brand of libraries with the possibility of who they are. And, and then everybody else believes that too, if they know the story, right? Like the guy who sits in his home, he's never been there. And can buy all the books that he wants, because he only got it one anyway. Like, um, he probably, he might give money to the library. He could vote for the library. But he has to have a reason to do it. And, you know, a lot of people, it's like schools, right? They want to do it for the kids. Well, you know, it's not simply doing it for the kids. I think public libraries have a. Better brand, obviously than public schools. And, uh, there's everybody else criticism about public schools and myself, um. But yeah, there's not a lot I can say negative about the public library. And so, but how do we leverage that sort? How do we leverage that story? So the bulk of the community supports us, why they come in and use this program. Use as the goal. Supports, we want people to believe, not to necessarily come and check up or come to hold.
It's like, it's like, how do we make that part of our, right?
Yeah, I think I have the same sort of question concerning as Jen, that. My sort of peers, I don't think totally understand how the library fits into their lives. If they're not, especially my friends who aren't like big readers. But they don't really necessarily understand, but I, I mean, I, that's like lately I've been doing a lot of like. Hey, if you're ever looking for someplace to like work remotely downtown, like, think about the library, you know, or, you know, like, there's, it's like, there's, there's. Clear nexus between their lives and library, but they just need to see it because they don't have kids, they don't do story time, they don't maybe read a lot. Um, so it's an interesting, it's interesting to try to. Catch that.
Yeah, the business, I mean, there is a built-in, we've, we've, we libraries, public libraries have spent time building out the resources for. Business, right? And they still, it's like, they, and it's like, but we build out the reasons for them. I mean, there's public meeting rooms, like we've taken away. You don't have to be nonprofit, you can be, we are the capital, public access to the rooms. It's free, like all these things that businesses do utilize this that way. It doesn't translate as support. Uh, but I, you know, I'm, I'm more interested figuring out the way that those people who I know are on the internet and use, how many books have you written here? The heaviest readers among us is like forty one, fifty, thirty. So if you read fifty books last year, man, you're, you're, I guess, something that's across our society, which is like two or three percent. But, you know, most of us like ten or twelve, you don't need a public library, Jerry, for, you know, for the library, yes, like, so what's. Yeah. So what's the heart?
People associate brand of libraries with the possibility of who they are. I just think that's such a beautiful sentence. Just, sorry, sorry.
I just wanted to make one comment in the environment of what we've been talking about, we talk about is. And people value will do because it exists and have go there. And I think libraries are saying, so maybe that's.
Yeah, there are lefties, which any about anything you have to.
Um, I just have one thought and it's sort of tied to all of this. Is that just, I, I mean, there's no data out there about. Like, there are a lot of success stories about people who come from disadvantaged families, minority families, single parent families. Who used the library and the library helped them step up. Who used the library and the library helped them step up. In life and like I wish like, I mean, I doubt that number is much larger than anyone has any idea about and you know, like. How, how to sort of think about that and and not a role in that.
Other thoughts? Alright, so. Thanks, David, and um. We were fine, we're gonna make a. Some adjustments to the agenda. We'll have one at the same time, we're gonna. The the bit about sharing some of the why and service will be over month. Um, what I'd like to do is just set up. Some of the conversations we're going to have in the afternoon as we go with the self-assessment. And um. And just put some concepts or constructs in the room. That we can maybe come back, maybe give us a little chat or read a thing about us, thanks. So. Uh, I'm going to approach it in. Two ways. Uh, one is. Just as the. That you all are a board. That you are. And also from the same point of you all as a team. So um because it's. The board is kind of structurally, how are you set up? And the team is, okay, how do we actually work together and set up? So um. I will. Uh, I've got. Let's take the governance side first, and I have something to share with you. There's something I've used with. Lords before, which is um. My roles of engagement. So I'll distribute that and we'll talk about it when I get there. Is in this file. So upside down, that's why. So. So I think you can just pass those around. Um, and this touches on some of the concepts that are already in your handbook and that stuff, but um so you'll have that. The um. So you have the orientation from the state library. Which. Uh, and um. I am.
Yeah, there looks like.
Can I just ask something strategically like that? It's a little awkward for those of us who are facing that way, like look at that and I don't know, like. If in order to lay things down, I don't know if there's really like pick a side or something. I'm sorry, I just. I just realized when David just.
It's not even letting me process the questions.
So let's.
It's not letting me.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine.
Let's do, yeah, all those.
Are you gonna describe? Do you want to put it right next to Sam?
Alright, so I'll tell you what, let's start with the um. Let's start with the team stuff first. Um, because it's a little bit of a nebulous, but we give context and we'll drill down into, okay, what does that look like as a. As a board. So how, who is? Uh, who's familiar with? A a terribly named book called The Five Dysfunctions of a Team. Are you familiar, familiar with that? John, you wanna do that? So um. So it's it's a terribly named book by Patrick Wenzoni, but it describes what goes wrong with teams and it should have been described, it should have been like, hey. What are the five things that teams need to do to be successful and and the subsequent branding is, that's kind of gone that way, but basically. There is a. Um, there's a pyramid where you need. Obviously, you need each thing to move up to the next level. And I wanted to present that as a model that we can come back to. Because it's, you need to build up to get to high performance as a team at the top. And the the first one, I'll just put it up, the first one is trust. You know, trust within the team. Uh, then you want to have. Debate. And some of these, some people would say conflict, some people say debate. The word conflict could be uh triggering, I think it's healthy debate. Actually, I was in a conversation. This week where someone was saying the word triggering can be triggering essentially, like a violent word, so. Um, but activating, so the word conflict can be activating, um debate just means. Um, you're having people that express their views and and. So that when you make a decision, you get commitment. And once people are committed to the decision, then you you can hold yourselves accountable. Accountability or accountable, and then at the top it's results. So the basic notion here is. A team needs, people on team need to trust each other. And there are any number of ways to build that, but I I want to dig into trust, because that's um. It's another word that can be disruptive to people. But you you if you trust one another, that means you have the open space where people are really willing to share their views. You don't have people. Sitting there being like, I didn't like that idea. And then they're talking the hallway about it or they're or do do another stuff about it. They're able to just express all, everything gets on the table. You're debating, you make a decision, you're committed to it, and then you can go back and. And say, hey, you know, we were gonna do that and why didn't you take that action or whatever? And the person's like, well, I didn't, I didn't really like that idea anyway, because they've committed to it. Now you can hold one another accountable and yourselves accountable as a whole, and then you can pay attention to the results. And it's it's meaningful to say, well, did we? We said we're gonna do these things, we took the actions, didn't work. Well, I don't know. So do we need to change what we're doing? Does that make sense? Um, does anyone have any experience of being on a high performing team? That was able to do that? Yeah, so.
Oh, well, I mean, I'm on a different board. Um, it's a state board and it is a very high functioning. Board and you know, everyone is really. Um, encouraged to share things at the table. Um, we we try not to have away from. The meeting, you know, at work, discussions, even just one on one. Um, and I think that um everyone is really encouraged to try to um. Like not be afraid or feel uncomfortable sharing diverse point of points of view. Um, but I mean, it it's, it's been a joy, but just like if it's to be honest, it's been a joy just because. I know that when people are uh contributing, you know, they're not holding back um and um we're able to, you know, work through.
Other experiences of teams have really worked? Isn't firing on all five of these cylinders?
Yeah, I I think the library team did for quite some time and especially between the uh. I see the, so I, what I see from the library team is like between that commitment and accountability. Uh. There's some, there's something that happens, really, we all. Like, we're all pulling, like, we're all pulling for the results. And that's, that that's a beautiful, phenomenal thing.
Just some magic.
Yeah, some some kind of magic back.
Okay. Other thoughts? I was on, this is more on on the trust. My, the highest performing team I was ever on was a uh, is a facilitation team for a meeting for the assistant secretary. Defense for health, so it was a bunch of national um government, federal government, state and local health people and. And one of the other, one of the people who's kind of the head of the team came up and said. Hey, Eric, before the um, in this section right here, we'd like you to, if you're willing to, you know, stand up and. Say some things. And I said, great, happy to do it. Um. Just what would you like me to say? And he said, well, I think we were thinking you would say whatever needed to be said. When you stood up. So it's like, that's that's pretty high trust.
Um, I've been on a team where we acknowledged our own strengths and weaknesses and were able to. Sort of say those to one another in a way that we could ask for help. And I think that strengthened the team a great deal, instead of everyone sort of coming in with invulnerability and this idea that like. You have to be great at everything, you have to be the authority on everything, because nothing. Happens then, because you've got, you know, you've got varying levels of skill. So. That's, that was really a very high functioning team, because we had that basic level of trust to be like, I don't, I don't, Doug, you have the expertise in this, can you help me? Um, and that was, that was one of my favorite teams.
And actually, in the. In the book, The Five Dysfunctions Team, it's like a business fable. Um, you know, telling the story of this woman who's put in CEO of the company and it's a best and she has. And one of the things she does is Myers-Briggs type indicator, which is, that's my um. My instrument of choice, other people like, you know, Clifton Stranks or whatever. So there are ways. To understand, okay, what are we, what am I good at, what am I not good at? Don't come to me for those things and. Um, and that's a level of of mutual understanding that I can really read that trust.
I had a work team million years ago when I was at the quarter, we had a newsroom that was. For a period of time had been working together for a while and. It was like a good embodiment of that, because like we each like literally covered different things, so we had like. Know what that is? And we used to very candidly use for meetings, like, like, oh, Carol, like, no one wants your job, like, no one. And so, you know, you kind of pick it out, like, oh, but you know, I had a question because I was covering. School, you know, then I would go to the education reporter, or, you know, if she had a question about business, she would be a business reporter. We just really go with our strengths and then we know each other and that was huge. It made, it made all of us better.
And I was gonna just piggyback on both of those, because the most high performing teams I've worked on are also teams where. People understood. Not only what our working styles are, but also what I learned of our um. Learning intelligence is, because we all take in information in different ways and we speak. So having some sharing about this is the way I communicate or, you know, I'm on this piece along with my biggest. Was very helpful. And then people were able to say, well, I can pick that up, you know, they can backstop. Which I think is another important. I think somebody's.
Yeah.
In a negotiation context, we would actually assign roles to one another, you know, you'd be the scripter, your job is just to watch. And so, you know, when we take a break, and what did you, what did you hear when you were watching? So that kind of divide and conquer, I think, is really effective.
So. Words like trust, I was in a workplace, I actually um just before the meeting started, I got texted. A colleague from this workplace, I was in a workplace, before I got there, there was a, some kind of interpersonal conflict and. And somebody said, well, a third party said, you know, I just find there's no trust. And like that just exploded at work. So some of these words are so powerful, you're like. Like you say, oh, there's no trust. I mean, so, oh, are you saying I'm not trustworthy? Like, what does that even mean? Is that an attack or is it just a, you know, systemic problem or what? Um, so I wanted, there are other words like that, trust, respect, collaboration, all these things we carry around. These definitions are in head of what that looks like behaviorally and and how I would know if I'm respected, trusted. If someone's really being collaborative or if they're just um doing their own thing and trying to get me to go along. So what I'd like to do is. Just from a tooling model that. Um, for that. Even for and some getting three nine to to. To break down what is trust? And because that's the first step, where y'all are a new team, you've been fast and furious in this frenetic pace. I'm seeing today as an opportunity to say, okay, well, let's take a step back. Things, some things have gone really well, some things maybe not, let's figure it out and. And um so I I have no expectation. You'd be in after, you know, this soon after inception, I have no reason to believe you you'd be. Um, firing on all five of those cylinders, so we're just gonna. Go back to the first principles. So trust, I see as having. If you say you trust somebody. I I feel like that's a, you're making three different assessments about them, and I'll ask you if there are others that I'm missing. And so you're, you're assessing that they, you're assessing three things about it. The first one is sincerity. If, if I say I trust you, it means when you say. When you say you like me, when you say you're gonna do something, when you say you'll call me tomorrow, um. As you say it, you're not in the back of your mind being like, I know I'm not good at, like, I'm not calm, listen. So, um, so it's just a belief that. People's, their heart is actually behind what they're saying. Uh, and if. If somebody doesn't have that, even if they have the other two, which you don't know yet, but I'm gonna tell you, you wouldn't trust them. So you need to have all three of these in place to trust them. The next one is competence. Which is if they. If they say they're gonna do something, they actually have the ability to do it. If you hire a new staff person. In your organization or the library, you know, like, hey, go, you know, put these. Ten books into the distribution system, whatever, and they have no idea. They they may have all the sincerity, they don't have the skills to do it. So you gotta, you gotta figure out how to fill that gap and and give them the skills and training. The next one is. Um. Reliability. So this is the case, maybe where someone really, that staff member really wants to do a job. That you've done, given the training, but then they forgot, or they, you know. A friend came in or a colleague came over and said, hey, can we lunch? And so I went out to edit lunch and do the, didn't do it. So it's those three things. Are they, are they, is their heart really behind what they're saying they're gonna do? They have skills to do it? And can you, is there a track record that they they will do the things that they've said they will do? Um. So any questions on that? Or are there others that you would like to add? Are there other things, do you think about trusting someone?
I just have a question where like. Motivation might fit? Like tr- trusting. That someone doesn't have like ulterior motives or how, or that their motives are founded in something you don't understand? Like, is that a sincerity? I mean, I, it could be, I I just am curious about that one.
I mean, there are lots of.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean. I would see motivation as being related to sincerity, which is. I'm doing this, like if I say I'm doing this for this reason. And I'm I'm on board with the team and we're doing this thing together.
Right.
And that's that magic that that David was talking about, then, then, yes, it's, that's. Probably also motivation. I mean, if you think motivation in terms of discipline, maybe that has some.
Yeah, I mean, more the first one, yeah.
I I think for me, and I don't know where this fits, even there's a piece about really being heard. Saying something and knowing the other person's understand and that I am understanding the other person. You know, the whole active listening piece is all about that, but I think that's a basic component of trust too, because you don't feel like, yeah.
So there's, there's a um. It's like a receptiveness, like when you're communicating, you need to be able to have that. No, there, I guess that's not one way, but it's both.
So, you know, I mean, I'm not did listening, it's been. Reading. This is what I hear you say to make sure I'm really articulate.
There's like a concept they talk about a lot in law school about like painting of the minds, like, did you both mean to agree to the same thing? Right, or not? And like, what is that into that? And, you know, I think that's, like, both people meant to mean the same thing.
So there is some basic. Even there was like a foundation of that pyramid, which is just. The communication that has happened even before you could say, oh, yeah, that person has these things, I trust them. And now we can move up to the, you know, having a debate, sharing the ideas.
I mean, there's a level to that, I'm not sure. Requires all three of these, but then it's implicit, right? It's the person that you go and. The person you go to to relay the. The crazy, and you know, they'll tell you it's like, this is batshit crazy. And but that's some different level of trust, but it's almost, it's almost implicit, right? Like, but I don't, but it only happens after all this.
Yeah, and it's maybe a safety or a like.
You can go and it's like telling.
Safety, psychological safety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To hear what you're saying, David, is honesty.
Yeah.
That like, somebody isn't just kind of like, you know, they're not good at playing, you know, care.
So. It seems like this, the construct has some resonance in that you all have said some things about it. What I'd love to have you do is. Um, we've got fifteen minutes till my turkey sandwich gets here. What I'd like to do is. Um, just take. Maybe five minutes pair up, pair up with a person or a couple of people. maybe five minutes, pair up, pair up with a person or a couple of people next to you and say like, we wanna get from this trust, just like, what the heck, to some um specific concepts, then for you all, like, what are those behaviors that you're looking for, that you're gonna assess? Yeah. This is, this is happening in the right way, like, what does it look like when someone's acting in a way that is going to generate your belief in their sincerity and their competence um and reliability?
What are the, are the actions?
Yeah, actions, behaviors, what is that, what do these things look like, because we could talk about we could come up with any fancy words, but like, when you're working together because these are gonna be the things that, you know, I have some rules of engagement I shared, we'll get to that later, but if if you're gonna start performing as a high performing, if you're gonna move on that journey, it's going to be because you've articulated to each other, these are the types of behaviors we think are gonna make us successful, and how do we name those and 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 if it if it isn't happening, how do we say it, if it is happening, how do we reward those successes? Does that make sense? So pair up or trio up, you got five minutes just. And if we can drill down to, kind of what does that look like in behaviorally, I think that's, that'll be really useful, because when we get to like, you know, my rules of engagement or or others that you might think of, that's where you start putting these things in in a structure where you say, oh, hey, we didn't do this thing that we said. So who spoke to sincerity and and even maybe what that would look like or how you would assess it?
I kind of feel like everything that David and I talked about kind of lead it to all three, so it's hard to say like, oh, yeah, that's sincerity. Because it's definitely all, I mean, I don't know, um, on being honest being transparent about, you know, where you're at, um, not self policing, not feeling like you have to self police. Um, or, um, really, you know, you know, the David talks about the idea of vulnerability, like having feeling, so having the level of trust be at such a point that you're able to say, oh, you know, I I misunderstood that, or I didn't pack it, or, you know, whatever, like whatever it might be, like, um, so those are just new things we talked about.
Let me, let me ask a question about the vulnerability, because it it seems like that's that's kind of a chicken and egg thing too, a lot of times you build trust by saying hey, I was out there, I was on the, you know, I was on national news and I said to myself that, whatever, maybe AI could assess something, like, that's a vulnerable statement, that people would trust you later, yeah. And the more trust there is, maybe the more comfortable.
Yeah, this is true, and we have to, we have to be there, and 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 my life, like, I believe that uh, you know some, some of us are already given permission. And so, it's technically white men, and like, so if you are, it is the only rest for success, if you are not, then you're, you're fucking the whole thing up, right, like, and so, it's critical for me and my career, my entire career, my entire life, like, I I have practiced vulnerability, I mean, I cry over these meetings, I've probably cried in our meetings before, like, it's it's it's, but it's just, I have to be there, I have to be there at all times. I'm not, but if for everyone else to sit back to be vulnerable, you almost need permission, right, so who gives permission to be? You you set a stage, you set a stage for and 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 only some of us are allowed, some of us are allowed to set a stage, so you gotta do it, and and in some sense, we all can. And then you don't.
So I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm, my mind is on your question of who gives permission. Like, how does, like, for this group, how would you get to a place where, so like they could give me like, hey, I mess this up or whatever, like, how would that even work?
So you had this discussion a little bit about, and in the same time, it's a little bit of like you have to have trust. You know, to trust the way you're gonna receive, just a you know, a a positive one, or at least not one that's gonna make you not ever do it again, um, but then you also have to be doing that, you have to, you know, we talked about the idea of when you do fall short, constantly taking accountability, being, you know, self aware about that um, that that's part of what is gonna make somebody build, like, someone's gonna trust you more if you're willing to do that, but also it it's hard to be willing to do that until the person trusts you, so it is that same tier, it's chicken and egg, but but I think, you know, on a team like this, if you're gonna come in to be vulnerable, you're gonna have to just know that the response you're gonna get is not gonna be one that's for you damaged trust or further damage your reputation or.
I guess that's a different relationship to relationships and and than it is from work. And so in work, we should all be, we should all have a higher, there's something worth it on, right, so it should be easy for us to find it to work. In relationships, very hard, right, in relationships, it's hard because it's simply the thing between the two, right, like, or three or five, ten, but in work, uh, I I feel like there's a device which allows us all uh, because we have an objective, to me, and that that shouldn't, and I don't know, man, but I think it's different. I think it's different in terms of vulnerability with regard to work product and and the product of relationship itself, which is very.
And an added layer to that is that this is a public board, so it's really hard to be vulnerable with the team about a work thing on, and on top of that, have the added layer of like, everything is recorded, and you know, you're, I mean, I cried at a board meeting recorded board meeting, you know, and I was like, oh, nobody watches that back, you know, so it's like, I felt okay with this group sharing my vulnerability, but I I think that there's a complexity to that, that is, this is my first experience with that, yeah.
Well, and and the the nature of the board comes in a few ways, one is like, if you have a point of view, you kind of have to share it in here when if you're if you're, you know, if you're appointed and it's, you're representing the community, so it's a little bit it's a little bit tougher to justify being like, well, I'm not gonna share my idea with, because like, literally why you're, why you're. And if stuff's recorded, like, that's a that's a different animal from a lot of situations I've been in where it's just been about the team, now it's about the team that's.
Yeah, right, right.
I I would make a distinction what you all were talking about. There's a vulnerability which is proactive. Gosh, I'm nervous about this thing, I'm, this task I'm about to undertake, and I don't know what to do about it, and I need help, you know, and I know you have some expertise, so can you help with it? Um, the other thing is that, in relationships, I think about it as repair, so it's like something's gone wrong and there's no there's no avoiding the fact that something happened or or didn't happen the way it was supposed to happen, or Eric, you're supposed to do this task, you didn't do it. How do you have that conversation? And the other one might be more elective, right? Like, sharing something that's vulnerable might be a choice, but like, if there's repair to do, like, you, yeah. I was in a men's group here in Boulder, led by a um local therapist, and his his mantra was without accountability, there is no relationship. And is that, if you're not, then, and that's, I think it covers all the major, but if you're not accountable to if you have an agreement and you didn't do it I mean, that's, the relationship breaks down when that, when that happens, so I think I would make a distinction between the proactive vulnerability of I don't know what I'm doing in this task versus, hey, we need to address this because something kind of.
And I did bring this up, and David and I were talking about, like, so at my workplace, um, we have a uh safe about the elephants in the room. And so, you know, we always wanna be the kind of people that can talk about the elephants in the room, and so, you know, it's usually like, one of the benchmarks, I guess, can can we, can we talk about elephants in the room, or are we just letting it be there?
So I think the first type of vulnerability, the proactive part, what was coming up for me was a behavior that that I kind of need to separate myself from the issue or from the work product, you know, they're not talking about, you know, talk about this work product. And so I can just say, you know, that's just right now, you know, if somebody else do this, but I think that I don't know what the right word is, not that it's illegal, not identifying with it, there's something that happened.
Yeah, it doesn't make you a bad person, it's just, you're not training on this thing yours, your.
Yeah, I'm gonna drink tonight, so Shaw, how are you doing?
Just very attentive.
No, I'm just super interested in this conversation.
Competence. Because the sincerity may be where some of the vulnerability and like, hey, my heart's in this and I'm trying my best, and but this thing happened or whatever, or I dropped the ball on this task. Competence is a little bit, maybe more objective, maybe easier to, easier to address, because it's like, hey, there's a training, you know, there's an app for that. There's a training for that, but did anyone get into, like, how would you know? What does competence look like in the, in a board setting? Part of it is what Jen was raising earlier about like knowing, hey, I'm competent in these areas, but not these, but you're competent in those and not these. So what do you think?
Vina made a point about, you know, sort of, in in our deliberation and discussion and information gathering process. And I think like, that's a very stupid point that, you know, I think, you know, to help build trust it's tough to, or for some people, like, maybe not for others, but to feel like competent if we're I don't have enough time to like, you know, like, material or, and I I I feel that, you know, that process is much different if you were moving fast, so, um, I'm speaking from a point you made, but I don't wanna.
Yeah, no, 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 I think it just related to the element of, um what I'm talking about.
Eternity or competence, either one of those, I think.
Yeah, just being able to, you know to build trust, you know, to just yeah. I think you said it.
Like process.
Yeah. To just having more of that to be in alignment with with that, and to understand that, you know oftentimes the motivation in asking questions is, you know, just to understand, not to question people or, you know to poke at them, but it's, you know, to just understand, to be professional in voting a decision.
Yeah, pacing is a really interesting one, like I heard an organization once say, we move at the speed of trust. And like, I just think that's a really interesting value, because like, if you're moving faster than that, then there, you know, things will break down pretty quickly. But building trust at speed is very difficult, so how do you like reconcile those things when you have to get a district up and running in two weeks, you know, it's a make.
So I wanna ask a quick procedural question, because I would not expect any of you to um eat on camera, so I'm wondering if, are we at a place where we're maybe interrupt for a little bit, a little bit of salad? We'll wrap up that, the uh, I think the expectation is.
It's actually, I have.
Yeah.
Well, like, we have discussions, I'm supposed to eat on camera. I do the rest.
I do too.
So let's take a few minutes and then and come back and and Doug.